I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, thank you to our cameraman. I apologize. I forgot to give you the heads up and he was ready. We're on, so that's good. Okay, at this time, I will open the Wednesday, March 19, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the town of Trumbull. O'Call, Mr. Ovechil, are you here? Mr. Silver, are you here? Mr. Cousins, you are here. Mr. Deacon, you are here. Mr. Cole, you're here.
Here.
And we have one absence. Okay. So, uh, we're gonna go right into it. The first application in front of us this evening. In case anyone is here for the first one, Trefoil Drive, it's not a public application, it's not open to public input. But we are gonna allow it tonight if you were here for that. So if that's why you're here, we are gonna allow it. So, number one, Trefoil Drive applicant Trumbull 111 L C is requesting a site plan approval for thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty square foot commercial development for the property located at One Trefoil Drive pursuant to Article Two, Section four point one point eight of the Town of Trumbull zoning regs. File twenty-five oh six. And as you're aware, as we usually do, name an address for the record and then we'll let staff give us the ten thousand foot.
John Nuff, one thirty-five Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut, on behalf of the applicant. There you go. John Nuff, one thirty-five Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut, on behalf of the applicant, Trumbull one eleven LLC. So I guess up to Rob now, correct?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see, the application in front of you today is One Trefoil Drive. This application is for a thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty square foot commercial development for the property located at One Trefoil Drive pursuant of our Article Two, Section four point one point eight of the town zoning regulations. This is solely a site plan approval. It doesn't include a special permit per our revised regulations. This type of use in the industrial zone is only, is an allowed use and thus only requires a site plan application. That being that, as long as it, as long as it meets the required site plan regulations, uh, this commission would, it would be difficult for them to not approve this. So from reviewing the site plan, I just wanna go down my brief overview of the site. Um, and then we'll have some questions. Um, and you can, I'll pass it to you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this application did go in front of the Inland Wetlands Commission. It did receive an approval recently. It did go in front of the Trumbull Police Commission as well and did receive an approval, I believe, last night. Um, the site also contains variances for lot size as well, too. It was, uh, the variances were from, I believe, um, the nineteen ninety's. And there were variances from the DOT from a taking of some of the road frontage. So that property was of five acres and then the variance from the state reduced that to around four point and more than, a little, a little, close to five acres, but not quite. So, uh, that being said, this property is still in compliance with the zoning regulations. Uh, with the existing conditions on site, there's a three thousand square foot industrial building, as you know. It is zoned in the industrial five acre zone. As of right now, there's one entrance and exit from Trefoil Drive. Uh, the property abuts industrial uses to the north, east, and west, and commercial to the south. Uh, the proposed structure is a new commercial building. It's twenty-six thousand, has twenty-six thousand square feet of grocery space, uh, twenty-four hundred square feet of fast food, four thousand of a sit-down restaurant, and twenty-five hundred of, uh, medical clinic use. Uh, the new, um, plan includes two entrances and exits, uh, one on Monroe Turnpike and one on Trefoil Drive. There are one hundred ninety-two parking spaces where one hundred ninety is required, so they do meet the parking requirements. All the construction work will be going out of Trefoil Drive. On the site plan, you could see that there is a driveway apron solely there. So they're gonna be utilizing the Trefoil Drive and not moving on to, um, Merritt Boulevard with their equipment. Uh, the amount of fill will be, being removed on site, um, is allowed through the, with our regulations. The photometric plan shows no light pollution expanding beyond the property. The new application complies with current setback regulations for the industrial zone. The applicant will be coming back later, I believe, for their monument sign. The landscaping along the road is low-lying vegetation, will not obstruct any sightlines. And I believe DOT approval is required for this application as it is on a state road. Uh, the, as the zoning commission revised the regulations to allow alternative uses, as of right, they understand that the certain areas zoned industrial can promote different uses. So, uh, that being said, uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that this application is complete. And they follow the, um, those are Trumbull zoning regulations and I would request they move forward. I just speak to the town, I mean, not town attorney, but the attorney of the applicant. I did have a few questions. I believe he has the, um, a few comments. I think he does have the answer to those comments. And, um, I, I believe this application is, um, correct and full. Thank you.
Thank you. The microphone is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, John Nuff. So as Rob indicated, um, my client is the contract purchaser of the property, One Trefoil Drive. It fronts on one eleven, uh, Monroe Turnpike, where in the LI zone requires five acres. This is a site plan application, as Rob noted, pursuant to Section four point one point eight, thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty square feet, twenty-six thousand square foot upscale grocer. Uh, we know that there is a, uh, a great desire in the town of Trumbull for grocery alternatives to restaurants and in urgent care. We propose a very attractive building. It really will elevate this portion of Monroe Turnpike. It's a very thoughtful and robust landscape design. We're providing stormwater treatment that complies with the deep stormwater manual, where currently there is no stormwater treatment of any kind. With regard to the last two, the landscaping, the stormwater treatment, the project benefited from, uh, a very collaborative and robust, um, exchange both with your town engineer, Tatiana, and your inland wetland commission, as, uh, Mr. Deacon can attest. Um, and that resulted in a unanimous approval, uh, from the inland wetland commission. As Rob noted, we were also unanimously approved by the police commission last night. And so there's really no need to belabor just how wonderful this project is. It brings jobs, it brings taxes, environmental and aesthetic improvement, and a new grocery alternative. A couple of housekeeping things. This is a site plan application. It's not a public hearing. If the chairman obviously wants to allow public input, then I'm not in position to object to that. Um, as Rob noted, our site is less than five acres, but I appreciate that he noted that the variance that was granted in nineteen ninety-two in anticipation of a taking by the DOT. I have a copy of the variance and I submitted that to Rob earlier. If anyone would like a copy of that, I'd be happy to provide that. Um, you were hit with a flurry of emails today from Attorney Green shortly before the, the meeting began. Um, it appears he's trying to relitigate our inland wetland approval. Cause everything that he submitted to you, he submitted to the inland wetland commission. So we have submitted, and I hate to do this, but I have to, you know, provide a clear record. We have submitted electronically all the same memos that we submitted to the inland wetland commission that led them to give us a unanimous approval. I have copies of all those. I'm gonna submit all those. I'll submit them with the various. The one thing that Attorney Green did not provide you with is Tatiana's final memo that indicated she was happy with everything that we're doing. Here's the problem. The intervention that Attorney Green emailed to you today is addressed to the inland wetland commission. Prior to the meeting just starting, I was in conversation with him and Attorney Cordone. And he crossed out, and I believe he just handed it to Rob, crossed out inland wetland commission and wrote Planning and Zoning Commission. That intervention goes to inland wetlands. It doesn't go to any issues before the planning and zoning commission. So his client signed an intervention that he just changed. It should not be permitted in. I'm objecting to its submission into the record because it includes a signature on a document that the client wasn't even aware of what it said. Even if it were, an environmental intervention does not expand your jurisdiction. Merely because someone files an environmental intervention doesn't mean you get to legislate, um, gases that might be emitted from industrial use. You stay within the parameters of your current regulations. This is a site plan application. I scoured your regulations for something that would indicate that you have any environmental authority over a site plan application. There's erosion sedimentation control. There are some very sort of vague references to stormwater, but that's about it.
So, uh, let me give you my famous ten thousand foot, right? So whatever anybody submits here, just like in every application, we're going to take in, right? Whatever legal argument you have, if anything expands down the road in front of whomever else, that would be your time to object to that. We're gonna accept whatever's presented to us and listen to it and weigh it properly. And as far as planning and zoning is control, the same way we are not the police commission, if any development is gonna affect traffic in a negative way that we believe either from the entrances or agnits or things like that, we can rule. Same thing with any other development that may or may not, the site plan changes, impact, we also have that authority. They have more detailed authority in each one of those, but the planning and zoning of it has the overall authority for it all. So, trust me, you've been here before. I have no desire to drive down.
I know, and I don't, and I don't disagree. And I understand why you're gonna accept something that's been handed to you.
Right.
But you have to take an action as a result of that intervention. One of the actions that you have to take is the same one that the inland wetland commission took, which is a finding that there's no reasonable likelihood of an reasonable pollution. So you can make that finding, but you can also say, this is not directed to us and it hasn't been properly verified. This document that's been submitted, that's been altered by Attorney Green, has not been verified by his client, cause it's a different document. So yes, you can take it, you can accept it, you can review it, but it has no import. It has no impact. And it has no impact because you really have no jurisdiction over anything he's purporting to talk about in the reams of documents they submitted to the wetland commission and to this commission. Listen, I don't wanna belabor it either, but I, I just.
I heard, I heard your point and I.
The methodology, and I object to the, um, scattershot disorganized approach. At my expense and my client's expense, at this commission's expense, we ought to be able to do better. So I'm gonna submit all of our, all of our responses that we submitted to the inland wetland commission to, to, um, Rob now, so he can, you know, distribute as he sees fit. And then the last thing I'll say is like, listen, we don't have any traffic issues, but that's another thing about site plan applications. A site plan application cannot be denied on the basis of traffic. It is presumed that when a commission makes a use, a site plan permitted use, that it has taken traffic into, into account. So as Rob said, we are fully complying with your regulations. There's very little discretion on which you can deny this application, but we're really excited about bringing it to you, cause it's a really wonderful application. It's a great building. It's a great site. And I'm gonna have Luke Morrow, who is a professional engineer from Kevin Solly, who's gonna talk to you about the sites, stormwater, traffic, landscaping. And then Chris Milliard, um, from Colliers, um, he's our architect and he's gonna show you the, the really lovely renderings.
Okay. Luke?
Okay, can we, um, can we change the feed to the, um, presentation? Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Luke Morrow. I am a senior project manager with Solly Engineering, office at five oh one Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. I am a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut and also a professional traffic operations engineer. Uh, again, we're here tonight representing the applicant, which is Trumbull one 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 LLC um, for a thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty square foot commercial development at One Trefoil Drive. I'll try not to duplicate some of the explanation that's been done already. Um, just to quickly orientate everybody with the site's location, just so you're familiar. Um, this is, uh, just under a five acre lot at the northwest corner of Monroe Turnpike and Trefoil Drive. You could see in the yellow outline there, um, it is bound by Trefoil to the north and to the east. Monroe Turnpike to the south and then industrial office uses to the west side. Um, the existing site is occupied by the U.S. Sign and Fabrication Company. It's just under a thirty thousand square foot building with about a hundred parking spaces, give or take. Uh, there is access provided only via unsignalized access. If you could see my mouse, um, along Trefoil Drive on the east side of the property. Uh, the proposed development itself includes, as I mentioned, thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty square feet. Uh, that's broken down by a, this larger box, um, a twenty-six thousand two hundred square foot grocer. And then the smaller tenants you see on the side there, a twenty-five, uh, two thousand five hundred twenty square foot urgent care walk-in type of clinic. And then also sixty-four hundred and sixty square feet of miscellaneous restaurant space. Access in the proposed condition would be main access provided by a signalized driveway opposite the former United Healthcare, um, office building to the south side of the site. So we would be proposing the installation of a fourth signalized leg to that intersection. That's on the south side of the view here and then an unsignalized, um, intersection with full movement access on Trefoil Drive on the northeast corner. Uh, quickly, uh, we did submit within our, um, engineering port, a truck turning template that didn't, that does indicate a full-size WB sixty-seven, that's a full-size fifty-three foot trailer, can, uh, enter the site, traverse around the back of the site into the loading dock, which is on the north face of the building, and then off the site via Trefoil Drive without encroaching over uh, the roadway center lines for, uh, safe and efficient access. Uh, in terms of, uh, stormwater management and grading and drainage, uh, we did submit a grading, uh, fully designed grading drainage plan and a stormwater management report. It was, uh, reviewed and comments were provided from your engineering staff. Ultimately, um, they're in agreement with our analysis, um, and have signed off on our, our, our design. But, um, just to go through that quickly, um, grading overall is designed to mimic existing conditions on the site. Um, most of the proposed building. Most of the proposed building and the parking facilities will be collected via an underground stormwater detention system. You can kind of see in the northeast corner here, an array of boxes, if you will, that's an underground detention system that will serve to both attenuate the peak runoff flow from the site so that the amount of runoff is reduced compared to existing conditions. There's also a number of stormwater quality treatment measures on the site. Important to note that, as the site lies today under existing conditions, there are no stormwater quality treatment measures. So, those include four-foot sumps at every catch basin, hooded outlets to stop, to prevent suspended solids and oils and greases and whatnot from getting further down the stormwater management chain. There are two hydrodynamic separators, which ultimately treat runoff collected via the pipe network before discharge, and then there is the underground infiltration system that will help to reduce stormwater flows and recharge the groundwater below the site. Let's see. We just did want to point out, in addition to those stormwater quality measures, your town engineer, engineering staff Tatiana, did request if we could do some low-impact design type of measures, so we did find a way to implement three small rain garden slash bio-retention areas in some of the small landscaped islands within the parking lot that will help bring some beauty, if you will, but also with some function of treating the stormwater management. The design, excuse me, the design is in accordance with the town regulations, the 2024 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, and the 2000 Connecticut DOT Drainage Manual. In terms of soil erosion and sediment control, we do have a two-phase plan for this project. One essentially incorporates the site demolition for the building and the existing pavement structures as we prep for the final build-out, which is step two, the ultimate final site improvements, and then the building construction itself. These were designed in accordance with the 2024 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, and the measures include construction entrance, as Rob had mentioned, in the northeast corner to stop any tracking onto the roadway network from any construction traffic, material stockpile areas, temporary diversion swales and sediment traps for any stormwater runoff during construction for the solids to kind of settle out before they head downstream, silt fence at the low-lying areas to protect the wetlands areas on the site, and then also inlet protection for all the existing and proposed catch basins so that no sediment gets into those structures and downstream. In terms of utilities, as typical in Trumbull, the site will be sort of serviced by all public utilities, all emanating from Trefoil Drive to the east. That's natural gas, electric, telecom, water. The one exception being sewer, which is still off of Trefoil Drive but on the north side of the site. There is an existing sanitary pipe stub onto the property that we will be utilizing as part of this project. And we did ask, as a question from the Wetlands Commission, that we provide a grease waste receptacle area for any cooking grease waste that may be produced by the restaurant users on the site, which has been implemented into our final design. In terms of landscaping, any disturbed areas as a result of construction will be reseeded along the perimeter extents of the parking lot. There are a mix of plantings. It's a fairly robust landscaping plan. But our goal in working with the Wetlands Commission was to maintain as much as the existing vegetation as possible, most notably on the west side of the development and then the north side development. You could see there's no bolded areas with much landscaping there. We're trying to keep the native wooded areas as much as possible, as we could. Goal in-house is always 80% native species, never any kind of invasives, but we do try to keep native species native to this region in the New England Northeast in terms of our plant selection throughout the site. And there are a significant number of buffer plantings all along the perimeter, the western perimeter and the northern perimeter of the parking lot, serving as a buffer to help maintain the existing vegetation, naturalize those forested areas over time, and ultimately protect the wetland resources on the site. Terms of site lighting, we did submit a lighting design. It does incorporate all dark sky compliant, energy-efficient LED light fixtures. That's a mix of pole-mounted fixtures within the parking lot and then building-mounted fixtures as well, with little to no spillover at the property lines as required. We'll go through findings of the traffic study quickly, as we did present to Police Commission last night and did receive a unanimous approval from the Police Commission. But in terms of our traffic report, there were five intersections that were studied as part of our traffic impact report. The intersection of going north to south, these are all signalized intersections. Trefoil Drive at the Home Depot driveway in Monroe Turnpike, which is Route 111 at the top there. Second one down is a signalized site driveway, which would be our proposed fourth leg to our development across from the United Healthcare facility. Third one down is the Edge Fitness Plaza, Monroe Turnpike, and then the fourth is Monroe Turnpike and 25, the off-ramps Main Street and Route 111. And then our fifth intersection, which is not depicted here, which is the unsignalized site driveway off of Trefoil Drive here. So, quickly, we did traffic counts in September of 2024. That's manual attorney movement counts, all the intersections, to get the volumes, running through all our study area intersections. We also put tube counters down to collect the ADTs on the roadway. We determined that the peak hours of the roadway network are between 4:30 and 5:30 on a given weekday, and about 11:00 to 12:00 on Saturday morning to noon. We projected those 2024 volumes to the 2026 build year, which is when we anticipate this development to open. We included a 1% growth rate to project those volumes to 2026, and we also included traffic that associated with the conversion of the United Healthcare site to a assisted living and age-restricted housing development, which was recently approved by the commission. In terms of trip generation and assignment, we use the ITE Trip Generation Manual, 11th Edition, which is the status quo standard in the traffic industry for estimating trip generation. We account for what's called a pass-by use. Essentially, those are trips that are on the roadway network, kind of people coming to and from work that are driving by the site, may decide to grab something for dinner or maybe a gallon of milk or something from the grocery store. So they're passing by. It's not a new trip on the roadway. They're just kind of diverting their trip home to grab something and then proceed on their way. So when that is accounted for, the total new net trip generation estimated for this development is 292 total trips during the weekday evening peak hour. That's just about a 50/50 split, so 148 entering, 144 exiting. And then during the Saturday peak hour, the total net new trip generation, 364 new trips, that's 179 entering and 185 exiting. And those trips were assigned on the roadway network, about 15% to Trefoil Drive to the north into kind of the back roads of Monroe and Trumbull, and then also the backway by Amazon up through 111. And then the remaining 85% was distributed evenly throughout the Monroe Turnpike Route 111 corridor. The results of our analysis indicate that the three signalized intersections of Trefoil Drive and then our new site driveway and the Edge Fitness driveway will all continue to operate at acceptable levels of service A or B, which is extremely high, meaning there is a substantial amount of additional capacity on the roadway network to handle our development's traffic and even more than that, mainly because 111 does have two lanes in each direction at this part of the corridor. Additionally, there is not a substantial amount of queuing between those two intersections where there would be any type of spillover impact affecting vehicles to travel through the Trefoil Drive intersection you see on the right side of the screen and then our new site driveway on the left side of the screen. There's a 500-foot separation between those two signals, and the analysis indicates the queue should be no longer than about 200, 250 feet. So there's plenty of space during the peak hours for queuing to occur without affecting operations along the corridor. Don't think it's a secret, the intersection of Route 111 and Route 25 is fairly congested as it is now. It's operating at levels of service D and E, and it will continue to do so. In the proposed conditions, however, our traffic will have a negligible impact, just a few extra seconds of delay at that intersection, so generally operating as it does today. Queuing at the site driveway, we don't expect more than a few vehicles. We don't expect any significant increase for the queues at the Home Depot driveway or, you know, if the development at United Healthcare does come to fruition, we don't expect any significant additional queuing as a result of the project at those private driveways as well. And then lastly, I believe Rob indicated, we will need to go to the Connecticut DOT for an encroachment permit, one, because we're modifying the traffic signal, and two, we do have some minor recommendations for off-site improvements in terms of striping. We're proposing to stripe a left turn pocket into the site there to kind of get traffic off the main line in order to prevent unnecessary congestion along Monroe Turnpike. And with that, I will pass it over to Chris, and then we can...
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
So, before Chris comes up, I just want to let the commission know that in our ongoing discussions with the Wetland Commission, one of the things that they asked for was whether we could treat the stormwater that comes off Route 111. It's not our stormwater, but we agreed to do that. Typically, DOT won't allow it. They want to make sure that there's no impediment, but we agreed to do our best to talk DOT into letting us treat the stormwaters coming out their site through our own techniques or, you know, mechanical treatments. And so that was one of our pledges to the town and to the Wetland Commission. So that's the sort of approach that my client and Luke and his team have taken with regard to the project in general and stormwater in particular. So I think it's important to know things like that when you hear Attorney Green in a few minutes. So, Chris?
Good evening, everyone. As Luke and John mentioned, my name is Chris Millard. I'm a registered architect in Connecticut with Colliers Engineering and Design, formerly of Phase Zero Design. You'll probably see that says Phase Zero on a few of the drawings, but we are...
Sorry.
We are now Colliers Engineering and Design. That has changed since we submitted these drawings. Our office is in Simsbury, Connecticut, at 8 Wilcock Street. The first drawing is the floor plan. We've, I think we've already gone over this a few times, the square footage, the tenants, so I'm going to kind of skip past this. I kind of have the pleasure of talking about the aesthetics of the building. I know Luke and John have been very technical thus far, so hopefully this is a little bit of a change. We're going to talk about the aesthetics, talk about the materials, talk about the design. I've had the pleasure of working with this property owner and kind of giving free rein to look at the building design, come up with our own aesthetic. So we spent a lot of time trying to design a facade that doesn't look like a big-box facility. You know, these tenants are not big-box by any means, but it is a fairly large footprint, and, you know, we always run the risk of making it look like a big-box facility, and I think we've tried very hard not to let that happen. You'll see with the grocery store towards the left, which is the front facade, is the rendering elevation on the bottom of the sheet. The grocery store, we've broken up with different roofs. You can see the gable highlights the entrance into the building. We have some hip roofs to each side of that gable that define the grocery store. And then to the right of that is a lower parapet, which defines the other tenants to the building, which is where we have a potential restaurant. I believe there is a healthcare, potential medical facility, and I believe a burger restaurant there as well. Along the west side of the building, which is the elevation at the top, you could see, again, we didn't want to just let that material bleed out into one single material. That happens with a lot of developments where you'll see the sides and even the rear of the building end up becoming a concrete block. In this case, we think the sides are equally as visible as the front, so we did, again, break up that long facade with different materials, different pilasters, and then also vertically, you'll see both on all facades, we broke up the height of the building as well, so it doesn't look like a 20, 30-foot-tall building. We broke it up with stone at the base, brick in between, and then specifically along the front, which is where you engage with the building more often than not, we've broke up that height with trellises, with fabric awnings. And then these are the other facades, the east facade, which is the top elevation. Again, you can see we broke up that side elevation. That's the elevation, I believe, where we have the restaurant on the corner. And then as you go towards the back or towards the right of that top elevation, that starts to head towards the back of the building where we have the loading docks for the grocery store. And the rear of the building is the bottom elevation. And again, as I've been saying, we've tried really hard just to make sure there's some aesthetic to the building. It's not a solid block material, concrete wall. We've introduced additional materials even at the rear. Before I proceed to the next slides, we've got about five, excuse me, we've got about five renderings that we've created, photorealistic renderings. I want to talk about the materials themselves. Not only are we looking to create and introduce aesthetic materials, we want to introduce materials that are durable, long-lasting for a commercial property. So you see, we've included not only brick, as I mentioned, stone, the trim and the siding we've looked at PVC. We're looking to include PVC trim and molding, which is very durable. It allows paint to hold to the trim up to seven times longer than on a traditional wood siding. And then, of course, there's aluminum storefront, and we've introduced some lights for aesthetic along the building, which are all dark sky compliant. The first rendering you can see is from the grocery store side. I like to believe these renderings kind of do the justice. You can see the materials that I just mentioned, where we have the brick, aluminum storefront, the stone along the bottom, and then a lot of the PVC trim that we've introduced. You can also see along that storefront how I mentioned we broke up the vertical height, so it doesn't feel like you're standing up against a 30-foot-plus tall building. You've got those trellises along the front, and then also the fabric awnings, and right at the doorway entrance, we also have a canopy. Elevation from the opposite side, very similar comments. This just kind of shows you a view of the restaurant, the burger restaurant, and the healthcare facility. And then these are a couple of views also from different streets. So this is a view from Monroe Turnpike. It shows kind of the grading difference between the street view in the building. And I believe the next one is another one from Trefoil Drive. Also kind of shows the gentle grading between the street and the building. It shows the landscaping that Luke was talking about earlier that he's introduced. And I think one last one, another one from further along Trefoil Drive, so you can, again, see the, not only the front of the facade, but you can see the side of the building that I mentioned. We wanted to make sure it was arch... We wanted to make sure it was architecturally pleasing to, because it is, it is strongly visible as you fall along Trefoil Drive. So with that, I believe that concludes our presentation. I'd like to turn it back to John for some closing remarks.
Thanks, Chris. Rob had indicated he had a few questions when I saw them the other day. So if it's, if it's okay with Rob, I'll, I'll just ask your questions and then answer them, if that's okay, in the interest of time. He asked whether there's going to be outdoor sales in front of the grocery store. The answer is no, I don't think that's permitted. He asked whether there's going to be a generator front of the tenants. The answer to that is no. He asked about the EV parking spaces. We actually had them on the plan, but that layer got turned off. And so rather than submit something at the last minute, we would accept as a condition of approval, a plan showing the 10% spaces where EV infrastructure will be provided. Question about a sidewalk along Trefoil. The grading and the utility lines in that area really prevent that. There's really no, there's really no other sidewalk to connect to. What are our cut fill numbers? Do we need a special permit? The answer is no. We can, we're able to balance the site to a large extent, so we don't trigger the need for a special permit under Article 9 of your regulations. There is a monument sign shown in our plan, but as Rob and Luke indicated, we will have to come back for a special permit for the sign once we have our final tenants lined up. And then he said there's two tables in the outdoor dining space area that are not protected from cars. We're happy to, again, accept a condition of approval that will add bollards or some other protection as, such as a planter for those two other tables. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Deegan.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Commissioner Cousin.
The driveway, the new one on Route 111, is that a right turn only or is that...
No, it's a full access because there's, there, there will be a new signal head added to that existing signal.
Okay. Mr. Crowell.
No questions. Thank you.
Stelvecchio. Mr. Silver.
No.
And planters would probably look better than bollards, so we'll work with him. The only question...
Happy to do that.
The only question I would, not question, request, one of the things that we've experienced here in the past is overplanting, right? And we don't want to see that. So along the perimeter, whatever staff decides, I'm sure you're going to agree with, but, you know, we've had ancient commissioners that wanted to hide everything. We don't do that anymore. It has to look nice, but we still want to see everything that possibly is being developed and the attractiveness and the advertising for the signs. We're not in the business of hiding with landscaping anymore. It's a draw on attractiveness, right?
Understood. And as a matter of fact, and again, in our discussions with, and that was, as you know, Mr. Varesby, or Commissioner Varesby is also a landscape architect and he, you know, weighed in and it was very complimentary, but I understand your point and we, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. I just noticed it when I, you know, saw the last one with the, whatever foliage is going to be there, whatever plantings are going to be. I don't think it's the exact ones, but however nice you make it look. All right. So we're all good. Staff is good right now. I'm going to go to the public. So Mr. Green, I'll call you up first to get this out of the way. Come on up. And then after Mr. Green goes, anybody else who's here to speak on behalf of the application, doesn't matter whether it's for or against, we will hear that. Name, address for the record and if you would, just for our own edification, address the issue that was brought up with the letter you submitted. That would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission Staff Council. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of 720 South LLC. Let me begin by saying that I certainly take my obligations to the Commission and my obligations on documents and accuracy seriously and personally. I think that many of Attorney Nuff's comments are well-taken. And I can tell you that I met with my client today and that there is a properly signed petition to intervene on my desk back in Bridgeport right now. And I, I know what happened with the filing of this document. And frankly, it's a collating and a filing error that falls squarely on me. Having said that, I had filed the petition to intervene so that I'd have a moment to address the Commission on environmental issues involving this plan. I did not expect to address the Commission on items outside of that because I didn't expect that this was a public hearing and I didn't expect that those were issues that the Commission would be taking up from the public. Having said that, it is my client's position, and I should clarify that the notice of intervention that I filed does mention 720 South LLC, who I appear before the Commission on behalf of this evening. It also mentions Old Mine Associates. I do not appear, nor am I authorized to appear before the Commission on behalf of Old Mine Associates. I, I think under the circumstances, I'd be happy to have, by, I suppose, consent of Attorney Nuff and the Commission, I'd be happy to have the petition deemed annulity. I'll withdraw it. And while it is, in the record as having been filed, I don't intend to proceed.
A couple of things. One is, I already opined that we are going to accept anything that's put in. And if you have legal arguments beyond this step, that's up to you. But I have a question for Attorney Cordone. So we very rarely, in my two decades now, have seen intervender, intervention status presented to us. If he's already done it for Wetlands, does it have to be done at each Commission meeting or once you've applied for the intervenor status, does it mean you are an intervenor for that application through its journey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an excellent question. It, you have to file for each applicant, for each Commission that the project is being presented to.
Okay.
So, and I guess I need to ask a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman of the Attorney.
Right.
Counselor, are you withdrawing?
That's, I think that's appropriate under the circumstances. And once again, I think Attorney Nuff's comments are well-taken on this and I'll withdraw the petition.
So there is no intervention being filed?
So there is no intervention and I'm doing that because I apparently will have an opportunity to address the Commission and so the petition is unnecessary.
Okay. We can...
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So for both applicant, for both, both parties, there's no intervention being filed?
Well, there never was a signed intervention on behalf of Old Mine, but on behalf of 720, that is formally withdrawn.
And you're just going to speak to the application as a member of the public tonight? It's not a public hearing, but you're going to take that opportunity?
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor.
But as a member of the public representing his client?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Although it's kind of walking and talking like a public hearing a little bit, but I appreciate...
By me allowing public comment, I've created the only aspect that was not here for a public hearing, so I've allowed it.
No, I appreciate it and, and honestly, I really appreciate the generosity of the Chair and allowing...
And it will be into the future because our intent was to streamline the process when this zone change was created, but not to leave the public out, which is why we, why we asked when we did it. There would still be a public hearing and the answer was yes. The part, no public comment required, kind of got fallen by the wayside. So if public is here to comment, whether it's 824s or these type of things, we generally want to hear what the public's opinion is. That's why we're here, to represent the public.
Right. So, so once again, it's, it's the position of 720 South that the site plan does not comply with the regulations in several respects, including a, a number of aspects involving the site design, landscaping. But most notably, and what I came to...
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you. If you're throwing out objections, you got to give me some specificity.
Well, I'm going to get to that.
Okay. All right. If you're diving back in, that's fine. Sorry.
Sure. On the storm, on the stormwater aspect, and this is an issue that was raised at Inland Wetlands, your regulations require under Section 5.3.3, stormwater management plans for uses requiring, and it says a special permit or other review by the Commission. Clearly, this is a site plan review. So I would submit that it is subject to the submission of a stormwater management plan. There was some materials submitted by the applicant with respect to this application. However, I note that at the Inland Wetlands hearing, well, let me back up. This afternoon, Attorney Nuff had filed a document, an updated document, which was a letter from the Engineering Department. And I don't know whether the Commission's had an opportunity to see it, but notably at the conclusion of the Inland Wetlands hearing, one of the issues that I found troubling is that there are presently required perk tests, then infiltration tests for the proposed rain gardens and some other stormwater features on the site. And the way that it was dealt with by the Wetlands Commission was as a condition of approval. And basically, the Wetlands Commission sort of delegated the review of perk tests to the town engineer prior to signing a building permit. So the perk tests are not complete. And I went to the Inland Wetlands Department. It's been two weeks today and I was informed that there have been no, those results have not been received yet by Inland Wetlands. Obviously, the Inland Wetlands proceeding is concluded and a notice of decision was published, but these perk tests are still outstanding.
Did you just say at the beginning of that that the perk tests were made a condition of the building permit approval?
Well, they were treated as such. There's a line in the conditions that says that the additional comments, and it's adhere to the Engineering Review Comment Letter dated February 27, 2025. That's a condition of the Inland Wetland permit.
Okay.
And one of the issues that we raised at Inland Wetlands was that the Commission could not make findings on the efficacy of the stormwater system because soil testing was not complete. Therefore, infiltration, perk, percolation couldn't, wasn't proven because the tests aren't in.
Right.
So once again, it was made a condition in Item 8 of the comments by Engineering was submit deep and perk tests for the proposed rain gardens on the site. I checked today and they were not received and I note that...
Was there, was there a deadline? Was the deadline before this meeting or was the deadline for the engineering, the construction?
That's a great question. There was no deadlines set.
Okay.
But the letter submitted by Attorney Nuff today, that was an update from Engineering on, on sort of conditions that had been satisfied, indicated that this has not been provided yet. So the reason I'm getting into that is because in your zoning regulations, it speaks to the need for stormwater management plans for uses requiring a special permit or other review by the Commission. So there has to be a stormwater management plan. And Section 5.3.2, 5.3.3A11 says that, requires that percolation tests and test pits must be conducted at the location of the subsurface drainage facilities prior to the design submission and may be shown on the plans and incorporated into the design. These must be witnessed. So your regulations require that they be submitted. And if you look at the detail on the rain gardens, there is a subsurface feature to them. There's perforated pipe running under them and there's a stone structure and that sort of thing. Equally significantly, however, your regulations require under B3 of that section, so it's 5.33B3, it looks like. Design of detention basins, sediment ponds and other structures shall be in accordance with the current version of the Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control and design of infiltration practices shall be in accordance with the current version of the Stormwater Quality Manual. And this afternoon, late this afternoon, it occurred to me, I, I submitted Section, Chapter 10 of the 2024 Deep Stormwater Quality Manual. And I know that the Commission doesn't have it before you at the moment because it was at like 6 o'clock, because it occurred to me that I should probably have it in the record. So I won't reference it, but one of the arguments that we made at Wetlands was that the applicant hadn't adequately tested the areas for its underground detention and for its, under its rain garden because the, as you'll see, if, once you have an opportunity to review that detail, that it's required that the applicant demonstrate the condition of the soil to a depth of 36 inches below the bottom of any detention structures and that, and also in any fill. And that has not been done yet. So I guess my point is that this application is premature because this Commission cannot make the findings that it needs to make on stormwater, on the stormwater management plan without having those test results before you. You can't make those conclusions and also you can't accept it because the application is incomplete. So that's basically what I had hoped to address and I had submitted some letters from, when I still had an intervention in this case, a petition. I had submitted some letters by Steve Trinkus, Licensed Professional Engineer, that spoke to each of these items. They are still in the record and they have been submitted, so the Commission can see them. And he highlights how those infirmities in the subsurface drainage system result in a system that can't be proven to adequately treat stormwater and the like.
So, okay, just tell me when you're done.
Well, I'm done.
Okay. So oversimplifying, which I like to do, your points are with test documentation that you're submitting is required prior to approval has not been done. You're not stating any additional negative impact of this development that I heard yet. I, I understand what you said and I'm going to ask those questions and see where we are with the attorney and staff. Those are good questions. But I have not heard anything other than the application process is flawed because of the lack of testing that should have been done previous to our ability to approve, right?
Correct.
Good. Okay. I just want to make sure I was following along.
That's correct. And one step further is that Section 8-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes deals with site plan approvals among other, among other procedures for a Commission. And as I know this Commission is familiar, it's the procedure that an application at Inland Wetlands must be filed before an application for site plan approval. And you have to have the approval of the Inland Wetlands Commission before you can rule. And one of those features in that section is that you see the conditions imposed or the decision imposed by Inland Wetlands and you can impose conditions similarly that are different than the conditions imposed by Inland Wetlands. And you have to state the reasons for the conditions that you might impose. And my point is that you can't make those judgments without the testing being complete. And I would suggest that the Wetlands Commission, and we'll get to this in another venue in the not-too-distant future, the, the Wetlands can't delegate that function to the town engineer or staff to assess test results and their impacts on stormwater. Because if you think about it, if those test results come back and it's, and it's, for example, ledge right under the rain, rain gardens or under any of the stormwater treatment facilities, then they're not going to infiltrate possibly properly. They're not going to receive and infiltrate stormwater. So you have to have that before you kind of make those decisions.
So I'm, I have no intention to litigate with you, but I am going to go back and forth once with that.
Okay.
So we, I'm sure other Commissions do, as you're pointing out, we regularly default to staff to complete details of an application, in my opinion, and the Commission's... to staff to complete details of an application, in my opinion and the commission's opinion. Staff are the professionals hired to spearhead and shepherd our rules and regulations that they help create and provide the expertise to us here. So if any commission, this one or any others, delegate to staff, one would assume that the staff is going to approve or not approve commensurate on the regu, same exact regulations and requirements that the commission would, but absent the commission delegating it to professional staff who does it for a living. That's our opinion. That's my opinion. A little contrary to yours when you say you can't delegate because I know we delegate. Landscaping and some other things, staff can have the final decision because the criteria of the complete measurements and requirements are there for staff to make sure that they're in compliance with. And it helps cut red tape of having people to come back withholding costs and months and months and months.
You make a great point. But let me just distinguish this. When you, as a commission, have to make certain findings, for example, with wetlands, you have to find, as a commission under the regulations, the commission has to make findings of impacts and feasible improvement alternatives and that sort of thing. Similarly, this commission wouldn't say to staff, oh, we've gotten a traffic report, or we've gotten, you know, findings that this commission has to make in, for example, granting a special permit.
Right.
You might seek the advice or report from staff or input from staff. And on landscaping within certain parameters, I can understand how you'd say-
Right.
...as long as it-
Right.
You know, with-
And there are occasions where we have done engineering plan, make sure the detail is there. But I don't know about other commissions, we make sure the scope is there. Make sure it's within the parameters of X and Y.
Right.
Whatever. I don't know what's been done and what your litigation's going to be outside of this and whatever it is.
Right. Sure.
But as far as we're concerned, I don't, I've listened to all your stuff and really good questions, somebody's going to have to give me some answers to. At one point, I don't agree with. It all depends on the criteria offered to ask the staff to approve. That's all my point is.
All right. Well, look, I didn't come here to, I, I came here just to address these environmental issues on behalf of 720 South. And I, once again, appreciate the commission hearing me. And I appreciate, you know, the spirit of allowing public participation.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Before you come back, is there, no, I'm, I'm going to make, anybody else here to speak for or against this application? I know Attorney Nuff has some recap that he'd like to present, but I'd like him to do it once, in case anybody else brings anything else up. No one else here to speak for or against? Okay. Mr. Nuff, feel free.
Okay. Let's talk about some context about Attorney Green's comments. First off, we were before the inland wetland commission for four nights, full public hearing, fully analyzed by Tatiana and the commission. The memo that Attorney Green referenced from Tatiana was part of the wetland record. It didn't magically appear this evening. I submitted this evening because you got this flurry of documents from Attorney Green this afternoon. Didn't have the courtesy to give them to you while in advance. So I, in response, gave you everything that we provided to the inland wetland commission. And one of the things that Tatiana did was looked at all the things that we supplied in response to the flurry of documents from Mr. Trinkus. And it was essentially, I agree with the applicants. That was the memo from Tatiana that was part of the wetland record that led to their approval. So this isn't something that came out of the woodwork this afternoon. Two, these rain gardens that Attorney Green is mentioning, those were at the request of Tatiana. We had a fully compliant stormwater treatment system without those rain gardens. Fully compliant, fully compliant with your 2004 stormwater manual.
So I'm going to, I'm going to slow you down. You're, you're on a roll.
Okay.
She asked you to make it, she asked it for an addition to your plan.
Yes. We had a fully compliant-
Stop. I'm going to ask slow questions.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll point when it's your turn.
Okay.
So she asked you to add it to the application.
Correct.
One would assume you agreed.
Of course.
All right.
Along with a lot of other things. Yes.
So if you did agree to install rain gardens, they become necessary part of the stormwater plan?
Actually, no.
No. So-
Attorney, it's, it's shocking because Attorney Green is now claiming that these are somehow fundamental to the overall stormwater treatment when his own expert in front of the wetland commission called it greenwashing. So no, they are not necessary for the effective treatment of stormwater.
Okay.
They are a nice supplement to-
Time out. That, all I'm trying to answer is no. I, the more, the deeper you get, the loss I'm, I'm going to get.
Okay.
So I got his point. I got yours. Staff is going to have to opine, both the attorney and staff. You know, it's going to be one Mars going to wish he was here tonight instead of just you. Maybe calling him at home. So I'm going to get staff's opinion on that same. Let's move on. Go ahead. Keep going.
Okay. So these rain gardens were added. They were added in a place where, because the, the way the topography of the site is now, you can't possibly do the infiltration testing. But what we showed on our plans, on our cut sheets, and I'm sure they're in their, in the planning and zoning, right, plans as well.
All right. Now you-
Is that we will bring in our own fill that will percolate properly.
Okay. So which is it? They're not part of the stormwater plan? Or where you agreed to put them, you can't, you can't do the test?
They are, they are a nice and minor supplement to a fully compliant stormwater treatment plan.
Yeah. Listen to my question. I'm on nobody's side here. I'm really just trying to get answers to questions. You agreed to put it there.
We agreed to put them in.
You just made a statement that you don't think it's part of the stormwater plan. I got your statement.
That's very clear. Yes.
Now you just made a statement that said, where it was put, the test can't be completed because of its location.
Correct.
That kind of flies in the face of why would you need to do it in the first place if it wasn't a requirement?
It's not needed.
But then you just said it was unable to be done. That's-
No. I want to be very clear.
Okay.
It can be done, but the testing, the, of the, of the soils cannot be done currently until the actual excavation of the site begins to occur. But that is, but to say that we made this other additional, in the same way that we agreed to approach the DOT to treat their stormwater, we agreed to this added condition from Tatiana to say, it would be nice-
Okay.
-if we could do that.
So let me make sure I'm following, again, in my simple language.
Okay.
I think you gave me what I was looking for. The reason it can't be done is because it's a future task and needs excavation before it can be installed and tested. And you only agreed to that because staff asked.
It, it is a very common occurrence on a large construction site that you can't test-
Got it. Move on.
-every bit of soil. So therefore, somehow, this nice little side feature that his own expert caused greenwashing has now become so fundamental to this application that you ought to deny it or we have to come back. This is how preposterous this intervention, well, obviously, no longer intervention anymore is. This is how preposterous these are. He had to, pardon the pun, dig that deep to find something with which we arguably do not comply. When your own regulations simply say at most that we comply with the DEP stormwater manual, which we do even without the rain gardens, and you have one expert in the room who's qualified to say that we comply with the DEP stormwater manual, and that's Luke Morrow, who's a professional engineer. There's no one here to indicate anything otherwise. So, and what he's saying is that deferring to staff, I mean, this is for Attorney Cordon. This is going to be like a Finley argument. It's going to be going before Judge Radcliffe, saying they were deferring the judgment of the wetland commission to staff. I'm unafraid of that. I am unafraid of that. This is a preposterous argument on a minor little feature because there's literally nothing else with which he can take issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I'm just, are we dealing with two different opinions right now that we really can't do anything about?
Correct. I'm trying to move along. Right, right. I'm trying to move along.
Like an endless-
Well, the, the part where I'm going to get Commissioner Silver is, Mr. Green brought up that we weren't meeting certain criteria required for an application. I'm asking him to address it. He's gotten to the point-
And by the way, he didn't point to any criteria that we didn't comply with.
Well, what's, what about the, the 36 foot below, you know, in the B3, where he said the soil erosion control plan and stormwater has to be 36 inches below the retention? Right.
I, I would be happy to have Luke come up here and bore you to tears with the intricacies of our stormwater treatment plan that the inland wetland commission was completely happy with.
All I would like, I don't want to be bored to tears or threatened with it. All I would like is a, a response to, so we have one because our town engineer is not here tonight. We have staff. We have commissioners who are listening to technical arguments. And the technical argument presented was you're not meeting the application requirements. And those requirements are technical pieces. So I'm asking you to talk about it. You, we just went through the rain gardens. And you satisfied with a retort that is, makes sense, whether legal, not, whatever. Next. Now we're at the next part.
He also said we failed to submit a stormwater management report. There is, this is on the town website. If you go on the agenda, half of the, of the pages attributed to our application are our stormwater report. There is a stormwater reports that goes through in detail. So, as I said, and we comply with it, with the 2004 DEP stormwater manual and the erosion control manual. And there is nothing in your regulations with which we do not comply. And as you'll note, there's nothing-
About the piece that he talked about in 533A B3 for the 36 inch test requirement?
I'll, I'll try to, Luke Morrow, again, for the record, I'll just try to break down the understanding here.
Try hard.
Okay. We, we physically can't do this so-called testing. One, because it's a 20-foot fill. We'd have to go import soil to do a test to raise the grade to the parking lot elevation and then test that material. We don't have a permit to do that. Right? So I think in one, in one case, we can't just bring in material for the sake of testing it to comply with the regulation. Two, and a couple of the other spots.
Staff, so what happens when a situation like that occurs? So if somebody says they're not meeting the requirement, right? It's kind of like a ZBA issue. They don't have the topography to be able to meet the testing depth requirement because it's not that deep, is what he's telling me. Right? What happens in that case?
So he, he, they cannot meet the requirement for the application? I don't, say it again. Say it again for me.
Attorney Green said they're not meeting a couple of things. One of them was the 36-inch test-
Yeah.
-under the, the detention ponds. And their position is, the test requires a certain depth of dirt that doesn't exist on the property. So they can't perform it because it doesn't meet the criteria of the test requirement that they have on their property.
Yeah. So then they-
What does that say?
They'd have to get some type of a permit or process to, to bring the fill in. But we don't, I think the amount of fill that's coming in doesn't require anything.
It, it, if, I mean, it's standard engineering practice. When you can't feasibly do something, you do the next best thing. Which we did is eight, I believe, eight moorings in six test pits in the vicinity of these systems where we could without interrupting operations of an active site to determine soil conditions are suitable. And where we can't do the testing, we will bring in suitable materials so that these infiltration systems can work as-
And those alternate plans were done in conjunction with town engineering and approved?
The, 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 our, our grading drainage plan shows the location of these eight test pits, of eight moorings, ANSEC test pits. And, and Mrs. Tatiana also agreed, the feasibility-
Yes or no would have been good.
He understood. But I, I can't, we can't do something that's not feasible. I can't do testing on something that doesn't exist, I, I guess is the, is the-
I'm going to repeat the question because I think it wasn't a yes or no question.
What's that?
When you can't do it and you're doing this alternate method, was it submitted to the town engineering department and approved this alternate method you used?
She wrote her, in her approval that yes, it would be done as a commission of building her approval. Because she understands why it can't be done.
That's all I needed.
Mr. Chairman, there, there, our, the engineering department is here because they sent us a letter that everything was okay and it was approved, that they complied with the regulations.
I got it. I, I understand. But we're, we're getting technical questions of not meeting the criteria. And we're doing our job to investigate those questions back and forth and get to the bottom of it before we move on. That's why we're here. Some days it's quick, some days it's not. Good. Anything else?
That's all we have in response to Attorney Green. I think it's a great application. We would request that you approve this this evening. Thank you.
All right. So we've been here almost an hour. We're going to take 10 minutes right now. We'll come right back. We'll come right back. What a country. Yeah. No, I didn't do it yet. I don't think he's-
Well, there's no public-
Right, right, right. Close the application, yeah. Mr. Nuff, did you make your closing statement? I just want to confirm.
I did. I asked you to approve it.
Oh, okay. I just- Thank God. All right. So hearing all the comments, I'll take a motion to close the application.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Elvakiyo, in favor, I, 1, 2, 3, 4. Okay. At this time, I will take-
Microphone.
All right. Get your names. Yeah. Five, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, yeah. I'm tired. I stopped talking after four. All right. Okay. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the application with the amendment, let's do it from the beginning like we've done before, with the amendment that cement plantings be put to cover picnic areas as the applicant agreed to. We'll do it in one motion, all right? Along with staff's agreement.
Through the chair, is that the one that Mr. Nuff said there was a specific condition? That's the same one we're adding now?
Yeah, he said staff had asked for a condition of- Yeah, yeah, okay. So there's two conditions.
Oh, the 10% charging spaces, that's what it was.
Right, right, right. The two conditions are to add the cement plantings near the open and exposed tables, which they agreed to, in agreement with staff. Staff will have the final decision. We're handing that to the staff to do, right? So staff is going to, and you'll agree to that. And then to revise the site plan to show the required EV spots, okay? Those are the two conditions. So I'll take an amendment, I will take a motion to approve the amendment with those two, the application with those two amendments.
I'll move.
Well, I'm tired. So moved. Second, Mr. Elvakiyo. Comments, questions? I want, actually want staff. Staff, can you give us a comment on the application points of contention and retort that were brought up this evening during the hearing so we can maybe hear it from the technical perspective?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, you know, speaking with the town engineer, the wetlands, first of all, the wetlands commission found no negative environmental impact to the site. The wetlands commission unanimously approved the project. The town engineer stated no negative environmental impacts in their review. I believe they have no, from looking at their engineering report here, there's no, they approve of the site as is. There's no, I believe there's nothing of negative impact to the site for their review. That being said, you know, this application, I feel, is able to move forward and the application is complete and, you know, we could get comments from-
So for the commissioner's benefit in mind, now that we're in discussion, saying it my way, the town engineering department has reviewed the application in its entirety through wetlands and through this process and is in agreement that it meets the town's requirement.
Yes.
That's what I want. Okay, commissioners, I'll go around the room. Mr. Deacon, anything?
I think it's a well-designed application. It's going to replace a currently vacant or underutilized structure. It seems to be an ideal place to put the suggested businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cousins, anything? Mr. Elvakiyo, anything?
Ditto to what Commissioner Deacon said, and also I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the design of what it will look like too.
Mr. Silver?
Same. I like what he said.
And as Mr. Elvakiyo said, we're starting to see the advantages of modern time, being able to see the actual building after it's built, before it's built, with the computer renderings that we're able to see now. We had it last month with the gas station and now this month with this development. I appreciate everybody's input, both for and against, and the details that were worked out and all the staff and all the other commissions that worked up to this point. And we realize it will probably go on in, beyond this, but as far as we're concerned, I think we got points. I think they were answered. I think they were addressed to satisfy this commission. I think I'm satisfied. Any other points we need to meet? Nope. Okay. At this time, I will take, I'll take a vote on those in favor to approve. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Approved? Okay. And we have to do compliance this one morning? Okay, we're good. Thank you. All right. We're ready to go right into the next application. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we have- Yeah, where's the other? There it is. How did you give me this? What did you send me?
Yeah, I'll just put these up on the table.
That's February. This is Wednesday. Okay. Where's my March? Where's tonight's agenda? Okay. At this time, we'll do text amendment number two. Applicant Connecticut Trumbull Village LLC is requesting to modify Trumbull zoning regulations by revising Article 2, Section 2.7.2.3(c) of the Village Residence District Regulation, copy of regulation on file with Trumbull P&amp;Z Office and Trumbull Town Clerk 2507.
So, Chairman?
Do the same thing. Name and address for the record and we'll let staff give us an overview.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. Happy to be before you tonight, representing Trumbull Village LLC. My office is at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield and I'll listen to staff.
Okay. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. This application is for a text amendment to the Village Residential District. With that being said, we did have to send out this amendment to MetroCog, or Regional Planning Agency, and Arctic Valley Council of Governments, and they both stated that there is no regional impact with this text amendment. With that being said, I did want to go over the text amendment with the commission and the modifications that are being made.
Are there copies for us, right? Yeah, I got it. Go right ahead.
Okay, so the, the article is Article 2, Section 2.7.2.3(c). It is the Village Residential District Regulation. So there's following, there are changes being made to number C as the location that this regulation can be utilized. A, on the street location, it says a VRD must either, and these are the changes, one, have a minimum unbroken frontage except for driveways of 200 feet on a state highway or state road and must be accessed exclusively from a state highway or a state road. And number two is the change that's being proposed. Its entire area must be located within 2,500 feet of the intersection of an exit ramp, exit 50 ramp of the Merritt Parkway and White Plains Road, State Route 127, located north of the Merritt Parkway and east of White Plains Road. So this, Mr. Chairman, is, that part two is what's being included and amended in the VRD regulations. This VRD regulation is a few years old. It's been utilized for, I believe, one property, the enclave, where they utilize the density requirement of that site. We have a modification here to allow a more detailed area to be utilized in this instance. And this is what the commission should look at to see if this is to-site specific or what other areas it may impact. So I believe this commission should have a discussion about this. Thank you.
Right. Attorney Cordone, before he starts on Rob's point that he just made, this language, the same way that Daniels Farm Road language was created and modified for that area, this is now being modified for intentionally the Booth Hill Unity Road area, but could possibly include other areas in the vicinity, so which is why it passes the legal test of not spot zoning. Is that correct?
Your understanding is correct, Mr. Chairman. It could apply to other properties besides just one.
Right. Okay. So, Mr. Attorney Rizzio, please feel free to go on with your presentation and reference whatever detail you want to give us about its future intent is applicable to convincing this body to support or not, whatever you're going to do.
So Chairman, I've been doing zoning in town for probably close to 30 years. One of the big issues, it's been the challenge to Trumbull, and I think it's in your housing plan, is the divert, how to create more housing, how to create more diversity of housing. And it's funny that we've actually created a lot of different diversity of housing, meaning we've, I think, actually I wrote the first age-restricted reg back in the 90s. We then have come up with apartment regulations. We've come up with assisted living regulations. And the interesting thing is what Trumbull's always been known for, it's excellent. It's the, the single-family housing, which a lot of people are driven to Trumbull for. And I don't think, other than the enclave, which I think was kind of pushed down your throats a little bit, there hasn't been a single-family subdivision of more than a couple lots since probably the Tashua Tree Farm in 2003. I mean, the demand for new product, single-family housing, is tremendous in town. We've had situations where we've been able to get a half a lot here, a rear lot there, two and three lots, but that's been about it for almost 20 years of having any kind of significant single-family housing development. You've had discussions about that the prop, the city, the town's probably 95% developed. There's very few large parcels and property that either have sat there, not eligible for housing or that have been purchased by the town. This is approximately, we have approximately a 16-acre parcel that's fronts, that butts the, fronts on Booth Hill Road, Unity Road, and backs up to the Merritt Parkway. The Mahaly family that are here with us tonight has, over the years, starting in 1947, has owned property and compiled property throughout the years to create this assemblage of about 16 acres. So their family's very vested in the town of Trumbull. They've been approached by numerous developers on this piece to come in with something a lot more intense, a lot more, we think, not in, not basically in, not something that the town would like, would be the kind of development they're looking for. We see that there's been this big demand for single-family housing. The project is 16 acres. We have the ability to create units that would comply with the VRD. Keep in mind, the only thing that we're looking to change, which this commission very, has a very detailed provision. I mean, your VRD is about seven pages long with the details that were agreed upon that created the enclave. The enclave, which is off Daniels Farm Road, probably the busiest, most trafficked road in town. And the enclave was, I believe, 30-something units on about 10 acres. Off of Daniels Farm Road, and we thought that the VRD is something that could apply to this 60- Off of Daniel's Farm Road, and we thought that the VRD is something that could apply to this 16-acre parcel to bring new, single-family housing stock to the property. We looked at, why is it so specific within certain reaches of the Merritt, within, you know, 2,500 feet of an exit, within, you know, abutting a state highway, you know, the whole, couldn't, the language that we came up with, which is 2,500 feet from the intersection of Exit 50 of the Merritt Parkway and White Plains Road, and located north of the Merritt Parkway and east of the White, east of White Plains Road. There's no 10-acre pieces that really sit that, that fit that thing, that would, that would bite this, but what happens is, there is the ability always for people to assemble, to go to, to be, to make up 10 acres. And the question is, you know, what does it mean, tearing down 10 houses? Does it mean, what does it actually mean? So, the underlying zone here is double A, which would require an acre. However, as you know, in that area, on that side of town, there's a lot of areas that have, even up and down Booth Hill Road, a lot of properties that were pre-existing non-conforming, less than an acre. You have the Thrushwood Lake area, which is probably, I think, mostly half-acre zone. You have the Pine Wood Lake area. So, there's a lot of more cluster housing development that you see in this general area than you do, than you would see, for example, up in the Tashua area or in, further north in Nichols. This is, this was the older part of Trumbull that was developed probably first along these major roads. So, we looked at this property and said, what would really fit? The nice thing about it is there's very, and we're not, the hard part about this application is I'm going to describe this as if it's a possibility. We're not supposed to be discussing a particular property, but I'm going to, by way of example, a property that could apply to this amendment. Do you understand what I'm saying? Technically, you're not judging one property. So, when I use this property that the Mahalys have assembled, I'm using it as an example of what could happen, not as a proposal. So, so, for example, you have this 16-acre parcel that is, basically runs from Booth Hill Road down to Unity and across the state highway. There's about three or four homes that exist on it. All will be under common ownership at some point. Just want to show you. So, what happened was, the nice part about it, there is some, there is some wetlands that are intermingled. There is a way to actually create a very, by example, this is not a site plan that we're requesting an approval, but if you looked at the density, which is three and a half units per acre, and you take out all your wetlands, you could get up to, I believe, 49 units on this 16-acre parcel. Keep in mind, that's all subject to zoning, WPC, I mean, wetlands, WPCA, and a site plan approval for you guys to decide on density. So, your village, your VRD is very, very detailed. You have to be able to comply with all those things. You cannot even come to you, I can't come to you for a zone change without a special permit. So, it's not, you can't grant me a special permit. You can't grant a zone change that makes this eligible without a special permit application at the same time. So, you don't run the risk, even though you make this property eligible, with all of the safeguards you have in your regulation with regard to size, with regard to uses, with regard to look of homes, with regard to buffers, with regard to setbacks, with regard to density, with regard to parking, with regard to landscaping. I mean, if you look at the Village Resident District that you did, it's probably the most described, I've never, I don't think I've seen a more detailed regulation that you have that somebody has to follow and gives this commission authority to really control density beyond what the max is. I just, I knew that the question was going to be, what could be the max? The max could be 49. The balance is through a special permit when the commission, after wetlands approves a number in a buildable area, is what this commission deems as appropriate for the property. One of the things we did do is we talked about at the pre-app, there was discussion about traffic. You know, if you, if you took this area, Booth Hill Road, Unity Road, that, in that area surrounding Exit 50, along Merritt Parkway, what, you know, that seems to be a heavily trafficked area. I will say, it's a lot less traffic, a lot less traffic than you see on Daniel's Farm Road, which I think is, which basically use the same density. So, what we did is we had a company, this, keep in mind, this is, this is not a special permit application. The commission had brought questions up in our, in our applicant, our pre-app about, you know, what about, if you're going to expose this area to a, to this type of density, would it have a negative impact on traffic? So, SLR, very well-respected traffic engineer, basically put together a traffic report, and you can go through it. I, based on the lateness of tonight, I don't, I can't imagine you're going to probably make a decision tonight, but basically summary and conclusions, and shows that that area, the Unity Road and at Booth Hill Road, the Great Hill Road and Oxford Road, and Booth Hill Road, basically talking about driveways, shows that it all operates at a level of Service A. That's on about page five. And the summary of conclusions is that if, should you ever have a development, if you're, somebody were to add 49 homes in this area off a driveway, that this road would adequately, this property such as this could have adequate sightlines and would not change the level of service, meaning that there's not going to be so much traffic added to the road that the level of service is going to go down from A. Keep in mind, level of Service A is the highest and best level of service, basically saying that people can come in and out without any undue delay or, without any undue delay or restriction. So, we looked into this. So, this area can handle a development as big as 49 units. Keep in mind, you've got about, as you can see, we can bring a road in here. You could have probably 10 acres, eight to 10 acres of upland, access it from Booth Hill Road without filling any wetlands, disturbing any wetlands, and build whatever you want to under other types of, other types of housing that would be permitted either by the state or under other, under other regulations. The Mahalys are trying to do the right thing. They've lived here. Serge, I mean, Matt Serge is his father, if you remember, his father Serge was an attorney in town for 50 years. Matt grew up on the property. His family's grown up on the property. His son is going to be on, lives on, will live on the property, and it's been their desire to do something that they can be proud of, and something that would be in keeping with the regulations. Now, it's interesting, if you look at this site and why it's so good, and you talk about in your regulation, buffering. When you look at the amount of houses that actually could, that are actually around the property, and I'm going to submit this so that you can review this, hopefully, in your decision-making process, and in fact, I have, let me, I have maps for you. Let me get these for you. It'd be easier to show. As you can see, this is an example of what could go there, all subject to your seven or eight things of requirements to get there. But I think what's, the way you look at it, is how well it's possible. You've got, for the most part, you probably have over a 16-acre parcel or houses within 100 feet of where another structure would be. So, it's, in comparison, we looked at what this commission already approved. The enclave, which kind of put right in the middle of a neighborhood, the houses that each and every turn, which was approved by this commission and by the VRD was created. So, in my estimation, this regulation amendment would allow an applicant to pursue an application on a large parcel of land that would be able to build one, two, or, your regulation calls one, two, or three-bedroom, maximum three-bedroom homes on these large parcels and allow them to be clustered. And I think this meets this regulation change, which would allow this property or properties in this area to be built pursuant to the requirements that we put in the amendment, would meet, would satisfy the spirit of why this VRD was proposed. It was proposed, and it was approved for three and a half units per acre on large parcels, I believe it's no more than 10, no bigger than 40, no less than 10, and allowing the property to be clustered based on topography, wetlands, and awareness. And I think part of that is to give developers or to give owners the ability to build homes that would be single-family in nature, which is a requirement under the reg, yet still develop the property without having to expose it to the higher-density, multifamily, combative-type proposals that have come before you in the past. I think kind of that, the VRD was the answer to giving somebody on large piece, parcels of property, the ability to build a cluster home development with reasonable density in a single-family nature that avoids the zone-busting applications for affordable housing and things like that. So, our client didn't want to come, doesn't want to come before you in that manner, but they do want to develop the property. I think because of the topography of the property, the way the wetlands are situated, the property doesn't lend itself to be properly developed in a single-family manner pursuant to the double A. However, I think it really lends itself to be developed in accordance with your VRD, which was designed and improved for, made off of, off of collect, kind of collector roads, near state highways. We abut a state highway when we don't have our main, our entrance on a state highway. And that, when you think about Daniel's Farm Road, Daniel's Farm Road, I believe, is a state highway until it gets to Route 25, and then it's no longer a state highway. You know, the Merritt's right there, and the entrance is right there, and I think you have adequate buffering and safeguards to protect the neighborhood from any detrimental effects. And on top of that, we don't have the traffic issues that exist in another VRD, which would be the lower, lower end of Daniel's Farm Road. And that's our application. I mean, it's the ability to say, you've got this 16-acre piece. What do we do with it? We think we have, we think the VRD is the most appropriate for its development. I think, based on the other VRD that's been approved in town, it's very similar in nature, but it's just on the other side of Trumbull Center, and it gives the commission the flexibility to provide new, single-family housing stock, which we haven't seen, other than this, other than the enclave, that we haven't seen in 20 years. I, the last, I think the Tree Farm was the last pro, last single-family larger, more than 10, 10 lots, and that was done in 2003. People want to live in Trumbull. People want new housing stock. People like new homes. We believe this gives the town and provides the people of Trumbull the ability to buy a new home, stay in town, and not have a detrimental effect on resources, or not have a negative impact on neighboring properties. And I think if you look at the report, which you probably will, hopefully will do before you make a decision, and not have a negative impact on traffic or services. That's really our presentation. I have Matt Mahaly, who's lived there his entire life, would just like to say a few words, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Attorney Cardone, Mr. LeBrandy, Ms. Bacalar was here. Good evening. My name is Matthew Mahaly, Sr. I reside at 111 Booth Hill Road in Trumbull. I am 56 years old. I have lived at that address my entire life. The house was first purchased by my parents in 1963. My house started out its life as a Cape Cod-style house. My wife and I have done several renovations to make it into its current configuration, which is a colonial with a wraparound porch. My house is six houses away from the potential site that would be allowed through this text amendment. It is also 400 feet away from the potential site that would be allowed by this text amendment. I have no intention of moving from my lifelong current residence. My family has been stewards of this, of a portion of the property in question since 1947. My grandparents, my father's parents, purchased 7.6 acres bordering the Merritt Parkway in 1947 from Mr. Lefort, for whom Lefort Road is named opposite the cemetery on Unity Road. They built their house next to the Parkway. My grandfather was an Orthodox priest, and besides picnics on the family homestead, he even had some outdoor services there. Someone from the family has lived in the house since then. My father, my uncle, and one of my aunts attended Harding High School because Trumbull did not have a high school at that time. However, my youngest aunt did graduate from Trumbull High School, which was then located in what is now Madison Middle School. My father hunted burns, birds in what is now Columbine Drive. A portion of that original 7.6 acres was split off, and is where my aunt and uncle built the house and raised their children, my cousins. My other aunt remained in my grandfather's house and raised her children, another set of cousins. I and my brothers attended Trumbull High School and played for the legendary Jerry McDougall, football for the legendary Jerry McDougall. Two of my three children attended only Trumbull public schools prior to college, with my middle child, much to my chagrin, choosing to attend Saint Joseph High School, and I asked Jerry's forgiveness for that. My wife spent countless hours as a room mother and recalls fondly our time raising our children in this community. Most recently, my son, Matthew Jr., purchased my grandparents' house, renovated it, and resides there. My family's roots are longstanding and deep within the Trumbull community. I have purchased neighboring parcels over the past several years from other long-term residents. The Nagurnes own the eight and a half acres and house neighboring my son's house and land from 1957 to 2020 when I bought it. Prior to that, the Flouters owned it, when my grandparents purchased their land. 51 Booth Hill Road was owned by the Kishabays from 1950 to 2022. Mrs. Kishaby was a local artist and art teacher. She taught art to my aunts, and they would, and my aunts would babysit for her children. She also taught art to my eldest brother, and my brothers and their daughter rode the bus together. I have accumulated these properties, not simply to develop them without regard for the surrounding neighborhood, it is also my neighborhood. My desire is that these parcels be developed tastefully and in character with the neighborhood. There is a significant shortage of housing inventory amongst many varieties in the town of Trumbull. There is a significant shortage of state-mandated affordable housing, and there is a shortage of single-family housing inventory. I believe it would be most in character for this parcel to be developed as single-family homes rather than affordable housing. The town has adopted the Village Residence District, under, under which the parcels that would be applied here would otherwise completely comply, except for the fact that I cannot put a road onto the Merritt Parkway. The VRD zone allows for three and a half units per acre. There is a need for single-family housing. The Village Residence District would fit in well with many of the nearby cluster neighborhoods. The density allowed by the VRD implies a lot size of approximately 12,500 square feet. While the existing zone is double A, one acre, there are multiple non-conforming lots nearby. For example, there are 131 tax parcels within a one-mile radius of the properties that are less than 12,500 square feet. Within that one-mile radius, there are 150 tax parcels designated Single A or Half-Acre Zone, which are less than actually one-half acre. There are 488 tax parcels designated Double A or One-Acre Zone, which are less than one acre. There are also 81 units designated as There are also 81 units designated as condominium, one assisted living, three apartments, and three two-family units. Several surrounding neighborhoods, which were established in the early part of the last century and are eagerly sought after, contain many non-conforming lots and configuration, which are similar in density and configuration to this proposal. They include the Thrushwood Lake area, which is characterized by many substantially undersized lots, knit together by the Thrushwood Lake Association. The Pinewood Lake area has also many undersized lots, especially those that originally started out as cottages, but are now full-time residences. This community, Pinewood Lake, is again knit together by the Pinewood Lake Association and is a highly sought-after community within which to live. Across the way from my properties is Lefort Road, which again is characterized by many non-conforming parcels, especially south of the Parkway along Unity Road. I believe this development, were it to take place under, if the VRD was applied to these parcels, would actually benefit the town from a tax base, and we will engage a consultant to perform an impact analysis to verify that. Town officials have noted publicly that the housing project at the end of '25 is stalled due to economic reasons. There are projects proposed on Reservoir Avenue for age-restricted and workforce, workforce housing. The town has a large number of apartments already recently developed. Town officials are quoted in the paper as saying plans around the mall include a few hundred units of senior housing on the Madison Avenue and Merritt Parkway side. While alternative forms of housing are being considered and have been built, one area of the market that has not seen growth in the town and is lacking organic inventory is single family housing. The only example of this zone being used was at the enclave at Daniel's Farm, which was quickly sold out and is now an asset to the town of Trumbull. Therefore, I respectfully request you consider this tax amendment application, which would apply to these parcels and be the best use of one of the few remaining undeveloped privately owned parcels in Trumbull. I would welcome new neighbors to the community to grow up in the neighborhood I, my father, my siblings, and my children so proudly grew up in. I look forward to continuing to be their neighbor for a long, long time, God willing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Maybe I should have let off with Matt. This is what it's about. You're making a decision tonight. There's a VRD that you guys have already established. There are so many safeguards in it that you have the ability to really control how it's developed, where it's developed. Density, look, construction, there's even architectural guidelines. I mean, you have, you will have the maximum amount of control over what happens here. The VRD on these large parcels above 10 acres, less than 40, there's very few of them in town. I'm not saying they can't, you can't create them by assemblage. But in this instance, this is one that has been assembled. This is one that does exist. And this is one with the amendment, slight as it be, does not, we believe, expose the town all over the place where you're going to have to send, like you've done before, Rob LeBrandy on a hunting mission to see exactly how many of these properties would affect. I think currently, this is probably the only property this would affect but for somebody creating an assemblage. With all that, we've heard about the diversity in stock, that you've heard about it in your housing plan, your plan of conservation and development. Trumbull is best known for its single family home, families being raised in town, coming back, staying here, three generations in time. And to do that, you need new housing stock. And we have it but for this one project, which we believe is more dense. In a similar situation with less acreage, less buffering, more in the middle of a neighborhood, was sold out in months and become very popular as people would like to see less yards to upkeep and, but have a similar sized house in a, in a cluster development. We believe that would be something that we could do on this site and stay in complete conformance with your regulations. You know, the town has bought up a lot of big sites because they're afraid of some things that could come. We're not looking to, we're not trying to jam anything down the town's throat. We're looking to come in right from the get-go with something that complies with regulations that you've already proposed, but just we believe in a less dense, more buffered area than what has currently been approved. And that's where we are.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll go around Commissioners. Commissioner Crowell, do you have any questions?
So with these type of setups, are these typically an HOA and private roads?
Yes. So a town doesn't maintain the roads. Towns are in HOA, just like what you would have here. This is really probably the best example. Nice thing about it is you've seen it as it's built out. And that's why I tried to give you the GIS to show how these things are developed, but then also show in comparison to one that's already developed, already approved under your regulations. I have another project that can meet those regulations, not very far away, but on the other side of Trumbull Center, on the other side of the general traffic area, but with much better buffering. Under an HOA.
You should put that back up because the cameras can't catch it. If you come back to us, maybe you get one of your associates and show you how to use the laptop with the stick and it can go on all these things over here. It's 2025.
I started here without a bald spot.
That was the between the lines of what I just commented on.
I get it.
All right.
No other questions.
My young associate is at Disney World, so you got me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Cousins. Mr. Deacon.
I'll keep my comments brief, 15 minutes or less. Sorry, the jokes aren't funny, but Mr. Dequille isn't here anymore. I love you, Tony. All right. Couple of questions. So while the average size of each property, let's, let's consider each individual lot is three and a half per acre.
Correct.
So that implies using all of the land to calculate that three and a half, all the usable land here.
Keep in mind, you have to net out. Nice thing that you did in your regulation is, so you can't come in with a piece that's 20 acres and 10 of it being, 15 of it being wet. Instead, I want three and a half units over my 20 acres. We have to net out all the wetlands and then you calculate your three and a half units per acre.
Right, so if three and a half, how many is it, seven? It's about 0.28 acres per property, a little, a little over a quarter? Is that accurate?
12,500, it's, it's 43,560s an acre. So you take 12,500, you're a little between a third and a quarter of an acre.
Okay, so on an ordinary single A lot, quarter acre lot, that seems normal and average. Don't forget here, they are very close to each other, far closer than any ordinary zoning code would generally allow in an ordinary residential area. I'm looking at the enclave and at the, the new site. It appears that sometimes the width between the home is actually narrower than the driveway itself.
Only for.
Of course, of course, it's just a conceptual.
You have the ability to say, if we come back with a special permit, I'd like to see more distance between the houses. You have the ability to do that. I just want to say, make this property eligible so that we can go through the exercise and come back to you. So what I tried to show is what it could possibly look like.
Fair enough. Let's talk about that eligibility. So the existing area in this area is, whether it's single or double A, depending on what side of the Unity Road and the Parkway it's on. It appears that we're saying, well, we're not going to match the existing half acre or quarter acre lots because a significant portion of the area already is on smaller lots. But that appears to be using a non-conformity, something that we ordinarily wouldn't allow to be built, as an example. I find it strange that we're using a pre-existing non-conformity, something that in general we avoid the proliferation of. As a example, in fact, as a precedent, when at the ZBA, it seems unlikely that would be allowed.
To comment on that, that's not what we're talking about. I think, I think, I think Mr. Mahaly was just pointing out that there's areas within this general area where smaller, similarly sized lots do exist. This is not throwing, you know, it's not inconsistent, I think. It is, the whole idea of the VRD and any of our VRD, and especially when you have either topography issues, is cluster the housing so that you can give the maximum amount of buffering to the surrounding properties. And that's kind of what we would like to make this 16 acre piece eligible for. From there, we have a whole site plan that's got to come up with and show you guys that it can work. Two, that the density's proper. Three, that the, that the architecture you like, the makeup of the units you like, how far the layout of the properties is right. So we're asking for the ability to come view with a cluster project. That's all we're asking for tonight on this property. We're not changing anything other than on those eight pages that you guys so carefully put together, which gave you that.
Right, and that, that original property, don't forget, was off of Route 734, which of course is Daniel's Farm Road. That is a state road. We knew when we passed that original regulation that that would qualify. There are a bunch of unsigned state roads. You can look them up.
No, I know this because I, I worked on, I've been doing this for time. The state road ends at Route 25.
Right, and, and the commission knew that when approving, knowing that, okay, it's not just going to be your signed roads, it's also going to be the unsigned ones. And we were aware of that going into it. This was not in the original idea for the Village Residence District. It's, it's not near anything other than the arbitrarily selected exit 50, which, I mean, why not? Why not everything near exit 48? I mean, it's a state road, 2,500 feet, nice round number.
Let's, let's be candid. You put a Village Resident District together here, because I think they came in with an eight dash, they were going to come in with an eight dash 30G and, and jam 100 units in there. We're not doing that. I mean, we, we could, I could fit, we could fit 200 units on this project. It's got water, it's got access, it's got sewers. It has all those things. And we've been approached by developers. We're trying to do.
I'm sure you have.
Yeah. So we're trying to do something that provides cluster, similar to what was granted on a, I think, on a less buffered property, on a state highway, which is we abut a state highway. We don't have an entrance on a state highway. We have a collector road, which Booth Hill and Unity Roads are, as is Daniel's Farm Road. And frankly, will not be anywhere near as dense as what's there. And the Village Resident District says, we have these large parcels. What can we do with them so we don't end up with 250 units and, and something that we can't defend? Hardy Lane would have been another specific example, which I would have loved to have come, if the town hadn't bought it. Would have been another prime spot for something that had a cluster housing. You know, but the town can't buy every piece of property in town that's over 10 acres. So you've got to say, the reality of it is.
I'm going to try and move us along here.
Well, I'm trying to answer the question. We're not, we're not.
I'll just close by saying that.
No, 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 I want to say something on what you were talking about. So I want to clarify for anybody in the audience who wasn't here and the comments that were just made about the origin of the VRD. Several of us were in the room that night. Attorney Rizio is correct. The origin of this language was from an applicant who came in with two applications, two presentations, and said they wanted to work with us to build that or they were going to build 99 affordable housing units. They didn't even make us guess. They put up both billboards. So that's why the designation and the working and the creation of the Village District was created. It was in lieu of the secondary. They're not saying that, they're not doing that, but that is now in the rearview mirror. The language exists and it can be modified if it so fits in other parts of town, if this commission so deems that it would work on other properties. It was created and it's there. The modifications are solely up to this commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My final comment is that the, the requirement to be, have frontage on a state road was intended to be on surface roads. Touching the Merritt Parkway was never the intention. That's all.
Well, what we've tried to do, and we had discussions, I think in a pre-op or maybe with staff at some point, was trying to put some limitations on it. And the fact that White Plains Road, I mean Booth Hill Road and Unity Road are kind of collector roads, but they're, by putting the Merritt Parkway, abutting the Merritt Parkway along that state highway, what it did, and we thought, I mean, you can certainly forget about the Merritt Parkway, would give you a level of comfort that you weren't exposing a lot of other properties to this amendment. That was primarily the reason why that language is in there, to give this level of comfort that you're not going to get hit on the side of your head from something you never saw. Do you understand? You know what I'm saying? I mean, hey, to me, Booth Hill Road, Unity Road, Daniel's Farm Road, Churchill Road, those are all your collector roads in town. Sure. So what we tried to do, which is the same reason you have the state highway regulation, was to limit the amount of properties that this could apply to. So that, that, that first requirement is so that they didn't pop up all over Daniel's Farm Road. It's, it's no different than this application here. That is not, that was not a.
I just think that while it did serve to limit it, it also served to aim those developments at certain areas of town that were designed for higher density. I mean, by definition, the state road's going to have more traffic than Unity Road, but.
So, so Daniel's Farm Road above the 25 and below 25? I mean, really, it was done because you could limit where it went to a very.
Above and below, it's a state road because it connects one state road to another. Anyway, that's all.
It's not a state road above, above.
Because there's no state road to connect to above it. 25 is there.
Okay. I'm not, I'm, look, I'm not looking to argue with you. I'm just telling you, although it seems you put the Merritt Parkway there, we're doing it for the same reason you put the state road on Daniel's, put the state road in the VRD, so that it doesn't end up going everywhere. And you're not sending Rob on a wild goose chase to identify the 100 properties that it could apply to. We're very focused in that you've got a big 16 acre parcel here that can be identified, could be limited, and give you the same type of density that you have on the other side of Trumbull Center on Daniel's Farm Road. That's kind of what this does.
Thanks. Commissioner Delvecchio.
I guess I always like to ask this question is, I know it's very limiting in the language, but where else could it apply to? Cobbling things together or not?
We looked at it, well, we looked at it and I don't think there's any other 16 acre parcels on that side of the highway or more than 10 acre parcels on that side of the highway that are not owned by the town or not a public park that, that would, that would match up to this regulation. I mean, staff could send Rob on that. You can ask Rob that question if you don't make a decision tonight and he can come back.
It's, it's any 10 parcels that are one acres that wanted to combine or any, or any that wanted to combine.
They want to combine and they want to be on, up at the Merritt, the whole thing.
Yeah. Any other questions, Mr. Delvecchio? No? Okay. Mr. Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I guess, I guess if you wanted to just eliminate Tamarack Circle or parts of Columbine Drive, that would be the only possible site, you know, that would, that would apply here. I do agree with Chairman, with Commissioner Deacon about this revision in the regulation sort of negating the original purpose. And I know your, your, your point about feeder roads and I understand that too. So that's my, that's my take on that. I also think that the, that to raise the, the point about 830G, which is a really unfortunate thing in our state, I think, you know, flies completely in the face of that really eloquent statement from Mr. Mahaly. So it's either one or the other. He wants to work with us or he wants to threaten 830G.
He wants to work with you. And if you have some considerations about maybe you'd like to see how the property's developed, otherwise he'll do, we're willing to do that. I'm really pointing out, that's not the way we came in. And that's why Mr. Mahaly wanted to express that. He's been there all his life. He's been, his father was there, he's multi-generational, and they want to have the property developed in a manner that, that, and they're going to stay there. They own that, they're going to, they live in those houses.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, this town needs housing. There's no, there's no question about it. And then the point about the enclave is a good one. The point about the one over by Priscilla Place is a good one. You know, and people do like these cluster developments. I have some concerns and maybe you can address them.
Sure.
Is, is, you know, first is the, the obvious one is the school. I mean, Booth Hill School might be the most packed school in the entire town. That's one. That's one. The topography is another. And I know there's ledge there, I know there's a, like a water course going right through it, in addition to wetlands.
We, we don't have to cross any wetlands. We don't have to fill any wetlands.
And when you say wetlands, you mean the-
I got a picture, now keep in mind, it's not a specific application. We believe that we can have a fully conforming road with proper elevations, and come up with something like this, that doesn't touch the wetlands, doesn't fill the wetlands, that rides along the topography.
So, let's, let's back up from the wetlands conversation, because-
Agreed.
We're talking about yes or no this evening, or if we postpone the vote till next month, but we're talking about the application to allow a development. Any development that would need to be brought for us would have to apply and go through wetlands first, and they have to abide by all wetlands.
No, I know, I'm, I'm just talking about-
So, they're taking on that onus themselves.
I understand, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the point was-
So you could pass this, and guess what? Wetlands can say, doesn't work.
No, wetlands would go first, but yeah, my only point was the, was an observation about the topography. It is what, you know, it is what it is. I mean, it's got, it's got, it's wet, it's got ledge, blah, 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 all those, all those things, so.
And all those engineering challenges have to be met, for you to approve anything.
Understood, understood, thank you. I mean, I, I really do understand that. I, I have a concern about the corner of Booth Hill and Unity. It's probably, it's a weird V, it's probably 25 degrees tops, right, so-
That's why we looked at it and gave you a traffic report tonight that says there's no problem with sightlines or level of service as relates to that area. Not to a specific project, but that up to 49 houses could be put there and not change the level of service, or create a hazardous condition.
Uh-huh. So the, so the, I guess I'll just finish with this. I, I think you, you said you have 8 to 10 net acreage, I think you said?
Oh, 14 acres.
Oh, 14.
14 acres of, 14.2 acres net of wetlands.
All right. Wow, that's a, I'm surprised how little wetland there is there, by that, by that calculation.
Keep in mind, that's our engineer's calculation, it's probably, it's going to have to all be flagged, go through wetlands, all netted out. We, from what we could determine from the town maps and everything else, it'll, we have about 14.2 acres of upland, all have to be confirmed to get to wetlands, to then come to a net number that would allow us to come to you. So this is, like I said, all hypothetical as to the number of units and layout. It's all just, we have a 16-acre parcel, it's got topography issues that don't really believe allowed it to be developed in a normal, single-family manner.
How many are developed?
Cluster, cluster-
How many acres are developed?
I said 14.
14.2.
Yeah, so I, I guess we're not going to vote tonight? Is that, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
We'll see how long the public comment takes.
All right. Well, I mean, what I would suggest is that, you know, maybe, maybe you can meet this commission and, and the neighborhood like halfway with, by, and, and I think the chairman mentioned this at the pre-app, you know, accept a deed-restricted, age-restricted development. That would be one, one thing, and then the other would be a reduced density. That's what I got.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'm going to go to the public in a second, I'll just say a couple things. So, I already reiterated the origin of this district, and this language is clearly being developed for this property's intent to possibly be able to develop it in the future. That's clear. We just vetted and made sure that it wasn't spot zoning, so it could apply somewhere else, but its intent is clear, and that's why we're discussing it. One of the major impacts Commissioner Silver and some of the others have just done is the intensity of the neighborhood. It's going to change the neighborhood. One of the things that this town has embraced, sometimes warmly and sometimes not, is change. And unfortunately, with planning and zoning comes change. Nothing is clandestine and nothing is automatically approved, but there are clearly those that support new housing and new types of housing, as, you know, Mr. Rizzio did say, the enclave sold out immediately. And high-end housing and the houses around it are now worth more than they were before the enclave went in. And when you live in a town where there's only 13 homes for sale, it is a place where people want to come and develop, and no matter what gets developed on these properties that people own, it's going to sell. And I think providing a traffic plan ahead of time was very good, and, you know, 100 cars a day on, on a road is not the end of the world. It's going to change what the neighborhood is if anything gets approved and moves forward, but change is different, change isn't always bad, but at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment, right? So, what I'm going to say is this, so you can come up to the podium, I'm going to ask you, because there's a lot of folks, I would just like to follow this if we can. Everybody has to say their name and address for the record, and if you start out by saying, I'm in support of, and why, or I'm against this and because. And once we get two or three folks that have come up, you can say for the reasons already stated, whether it's traffic, quality of life, kids at the school bus, whatever it's going to be, or you're in favor because of the diversity of whatever, and the increased values of the neighborhood, whatever it's going to be, but if it already said, say that, and then we can expedite all of this for us. So, it's a first-come, first-served in this, because we're generally not this crowded, so come on up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Barry Unger. I live at 219 Unity Road in Trumbull. I've lived in that house for 40 years. I've lived in Trumbull for 44 years. I want to talk about a few of the issues. I am not in favor of a development like this, that is this dense. And as was mentioned by the commissioners, we're showing a lot of homes, we don't see any of the grade, whether they can actually do it. We don't talk about the 100 cars that might be parked there and where they're going, or if you intend that one car's in the garage and one is going to sit in the driveway, and what happens with the rest of it. That's just the one part of it. I wanted to bring up-
I'm not, I'm not going to go back and forth, no, no, I just want to add something, you know, in conversation. Having gone through this already, you're exactly correct, but the people who buy these homes understand they have parking in their garage and in their driveway, and select parking around these types of development. It's a choice and a lifestyle choice. It is different, and there are, exactly as you described.
I agree, sir. I just want to bring up that there's going to be 100 cars here.
100?
At least, until the kids grow, get a little bit older, and there'll be more cars.
Right.
All right. What I wanted to bring up is everything that we know here. Since COVID, Trumbull grew because people moved out of the city. We have people from New Jersey, from New York, from all over here. Unity Road traffic is, I don't know what report they got, the traffic's terrible. I watched it where it's dangerous coming out of my driveway, where people literally don't want to slow down when it's time in the morning to go to work, they'll go around in the opposite lane, and they'll make a dangerous situation of it. Traffic is terrible. The speed limit is 30, cars are going down that road every bit of 60 to 80 miles an hour, including the lady in the little Volvo that drives by every morning to go to work. I think it's her way to wake up to speed as fast as she can go. The point's saying, people use Unity Road to cut from White Plains Road to get to Nichols and to Huntington Center, to, towards Huntington and to Shelton Road. Attorney Rizzio said that people are going to turn and go to Trumbull Center. Well, Trumbull Center, like I said, have been here a long time. Trumbull Center hasn't been a center since Dick Aiello passed away. And it's going to be years before somebody decides to go there for what, we don't know what's going to be in there. So all these people are going to leave and head down Unity Road and go into Nichols Historic Area, and head to Big Y, or head into Shelton to get their needs. So traffic in that whole section will affect everybody from Unity Road to Huntington and Shelton Road. All this traffic will be bigger, because there is nothing in Trumbull to turn the other direction. To correct something, if you live there and you get up every morning, you will notice that the cars that are in line coming off of Booth Hill Road to turn onto Unity could be five cars at an intersection, which we've never had at a traffic, at that stop sign. I'm waiting for somebody to say we're going to need a traffic light by putting this development in there, so we'll have one more traffic light. Traffic is worse than you think. Other thing, Booth Hill Road has turned into be the access to go to Shelton. If you go past Booth Hill School in Shelton and you drive past it, you have all the new housing develops on that road. I know people that will cut and get off our exits, go down Unity and get on Booth Hill Road to cut all the way into Shelton, rather than going up on 25 and turning off and going around. So there is a lot more traffic than you think that they don't see or they don't watch on a day-to-day basis. The other thing with the increase of traffic, part of your, your plan, the main plan for the town, is to make it safe for bicycles and such. Unity Road has gotten to be so treacherous that the kids that are on the bicycle that I've watched for years, to go down Unity and head, to head down Unity Road and head to the park, Unity Park at the end, is actually dangerous for them now. And part of your master plan is to make it safe for the kids to be on it, on the road and do things. I think this kind of density and adding this much more homes on that area is really dangerous and detrimental. I truly do.
Thank you.
I have one more comment, just to give you something that I thought was interesting. Please to bear with me. It's funny, I thought of this, obviously we know the weather comes from the west, the wind blows west to east. I see it every fall when I watch my neighbors leaves head over to my property, because it's blowing from west to east. The Merritt Parkway is west of this property. The EPA put out a report of highways and the danger to the environment and to the people that live close within 500 to 600 feet of the highway. That is the wind direction off all of that traffic that we now had more of since the 1980s. So, if you want to make a development, I can read it, and I don't want to, I know you have a lot of people here, but-
Yeah, no, I'm going to have to limit your time, because there's a lot of them.
Oh, I know, I'm going to give it, if you want it, I'll give it to them.
Yeah, you can submit it for the record, no problem.
All right. And I, I'm saying, okay, are we going to put buffers between the Merritt and these housing? What actually is going to be done? Are they going to do it correctly? And to my thinking, I know it's his property, you guys can do whatever you want, but if you cut down all those trees, you're now going to help pollution. And you talk about your master plan, about green, maintaining safety, and plantings and all this stuff. And on the one line in the beginning of it says, "The plan that reflects the conscience and the community to the best plan, best plan of all." I must tell you, the majority of people that live in my neighborhood do not want this project. I am the chairman of the trustees for the Nichols Association. I'm telling you, the more, the majority of the members don't want this to impact our community. Thank you.
Okay, so, everybody's going to get about two to three minutes max, because a lot of people want to talk, and go right ahead.
Hi. My name is Emily Mayaco. I live at 80 Oriole Lane, so we are, we are neighbors. I'm very disappointed that this is, that we're all here today. I do not want this to go through. I think this will overburden our infrastructure, which is already at max capacity. I don't know if your kids are currently in school at Booth Hill, but I can tell you, mine are. It is full. I know we have hopes of getting this new school, hopefully, but right now, you cannot fit another 100 children. If we have two per household, you cannot fit them in this school. I understand this may be for a senior community or something else, but if there are kids, they will be at Booth Hill, they cannot fit. The busing alone will be so detrimental, it will just be a huge problem. I have major environmental concerns, and I have huge concerns for what this looks like for our community. This does not look like my neighborhood. Nothing about this looks like our neighborhood, none of it. You want to maintain the character? This is not it, at all. Property values are going to go up, that's the nature of property values, so the point of reference about the enclave making everything more expensive, everything has gotten more expensive. I think that is a moot point. I also just wanted to speak to Mr. Rizzio. You were saying that your clients want to be proud. This is not something to be proud of. Nobody in your neighborhood will be proud of this. You may be proud, and your wallets may get fat because of this, nobody in the neighborhood will be happy with this, except for people whose pockets are getting filled.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. I live here. That is wonderful that you're trying to think of these new people that can enjoy my neighborhood, but this is my neighborhood. I will not enjoy this. And I did gather names today, and I just started to gather names, and I have 49 people in our neighborhood who do not want this. And unfortunately, I don't have the printout, but I do have names and addresses, and I'm happy to submit it to the committee. And anecdotally, I want to go back to the environmental factor. My husband came home a couple years ago, so excited, because a family of bears had just run out of your woods. Family of bears. I was so excited and jealous that I didn't get to see it. You take down all those trees, you build these houses, where are they going? I'm not going to see those bears. My kids are not going to see those bears. I am firmly against this, and I will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for or against?
Peter Kozinski, 22 Rollingwood Drive. I'm against this proposal. I'd like to propose to the commission that you are here to serve Trumbull residents. I, I would hope that it is not your intent to serve people that wanting to live here. They are not taxpayers, they are not residents, no matter how much of a demand there may be for these people to move here, or want to move here. Granted, there is a desire, I'm sure, by the town to generate revenue, which would serve its current residents. However, some of the reasons cited were, you know, like the Daniel's Farm property would increase values. That is only a benefit to a, to a, to a resident when you're leaving town, you're cashing out. We're not here to serve people that are leaving town, we're here to serve people that are still here and living in town. Because when your home value goes up, your real estate taxes go up, your insurance, home insurance go up, your cost of maintaining your home goes up. These are not things that residents today want to see. Their wallets are thin, and we're all struggling with inflation and the absurd increases in insurance. I caution the commission, because before you, right now, is Pandora's Box. Do not open it. Do not convince yourself with a false sense of confidence that we've done it before with Daniel's Farm, we can do it again, we've learned, and we're experienced. There may not yet be another site like this, and we can convince ourselves this is a one-off, but as Attorney Rizzio has pointed out, someone could go out there and gobble up some more properties. And may not be this commission's problem, but it will be the commission's problem 10 years from now. Please don't create that problem for my children. And lastly, I do have children in Booth Hill, I'm treasurer of the Booth Hill Fathers Club. Those children deserve better. They're a blue-ribbon school. We just dropped $2 million on a new roof, and we're all praying that possibly my youngest will be able to attend a brand-new school. And I feel, I feel terrible for the parents and families that very well could be displaced and no longer eligible to attend that school, because they get bumped, because there's got to be another 100 students to accommodate, be accommodated in that school, and now they're displaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we ran them out.
Hey, how are you doing? My name's David Stone, I live at 141 Fern Circle. Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me speak. I am a resident of 12, 13 years in the Nichols area, but I've only been here for 10, because I was in Iraq and Afghanistan and Africa for the rest of that time. I am for building, because I'm a registered architect in Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine, and I actually built the Harding High School- And I actually built the Harding High School that his dad went to school, the new one. We just finished it up, it looks nice. I am also Planning and Zoning Commissioner of Foxborough, Massachusetts, for twelve years, so I appreciate your time and letting us talk today. And on this topic specifically, I think it's about character. I think it's about character of the Nichols neighborhood and what that means to the town of Trumbull, and why I think that's important, because this isn't a requirement. This zoning change is not a requirement of the town. It's up to this commission to allow it or not allow it. And to steer the ship and set the standard for what the town thinks is right and not right for the town of Trumbull. I think a fantastic point was made for density. Density in Nichols, historic Nichols versus density of downtown Trumbull. I think downtown Trumbull just experienced a loss of density, and now it's coming to the Nichols area. Your bylaw says that the purpose of this, the purpose of this is to benefit the neighborhood and the consistency of the town of Trumbull. Is that what's the purpose here? Because clearly, this is a viable property for development. I mean, we have sixteen acres, we could buy, by right, we could build a dozen houses here. That would be a windfall. But I don't know what the bottom line is of development. Again, coming from experience of doing exactly, being on the opposite side of this, I understand that you want to maximize dollars, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm for construction, I'm for development. I also think that the 3.5 units per acre is the maximum that is allowed by your regulation. That is what is shown, that is the maximum speed limit. That is saying, all conditions perfect, that's what we'll allow. Right now, that's seven, that's three and a half to seven times the density that's allowed by right and by your zoning laws. And we, fantastic point on the existing non-conforming lots, you wouldn't use that as a precedent. But also, most of those homes are so old that they predate your zoning laws. They probably existed before you even had zoning in 1935, when zoning actually came into town. All right, so these are some points, I'm almost done. Let me talk about density, I understand. We talked about this traffic study, I would argue the traffic study was faulty. I witnessed a traffic study. It was taking place over four-day period, but not consecutive four days. It was taken up due to a snowstorm and replaced, so I don't know what the consistency of that is. I personally also, I'm sure just like you, have never seen a traffic study come back with any level of change, service change. I mean, you just had a new development across the street from Home Depot that's gonna have no negative affect. That's crazy, but this is how traffic studies work. I would also say that it is a... Let's say you set the standard.
Got it, finish up.
Let's say you set the standard, Chairman. And please, set the standard for what you would like to see, because I don't know if Enclave is a success. It made some money, but is that what Trumbull is? Because that's not what Nichols, historic Nichols is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kim Brolet, I live at 93 Booth Hill Road. I guess I'm against this amendment. The previous man was saying, was comparing it to the enclave, but the difference between that is there are sidewalks there, right? There is no sidewalks on Booth Hill, on Unity. I try to walk over to Fern Circle to take walks every day, it's so dangerous. And we add more people, it's just gonna be horrible. And then second, you know, they talked about line of sight in that traffic survey. Line of sight is horrendous when you're near that area, right? Because when I'm trying to pull out of my driveway, people are flying so fast on Booth Hill Road that I know my neighbor's gotten hit twice, I've almost gotten hit three times, my husband's been almost hit too. It's dangerous, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just really quick, my name's Erica Schnellenthal, I live at 277 Unity Road in Trumbull, obviously. I've grown up in Trumbull as well for over forty years. My parents have lived here, obviously, prior to that. Myself and my two siblings went to all the Trumbull schools, Tashua, Madison, Trumbull High. I would say I'm in the middle somewhat. I don't want it to be an overrun development, it's his land, obviously, he has a right to develop it. I appreciate what he was saying, that he doesn't want it to be a big complex and the maximum amount of units, I think that would be disastrous. My kid, one of my children is currently in Booth Hill, my other is in Hellcrest, and to have a number of children, if the maximum were allowed, even if the maximum weren't allowed, that bus stop would take up the majority of our bus route. I don't think it would be feasible, unfortunately. So I think a, maybe a good middle ground is fifty-five plus, less units. There's obviously wetlands there, that will be figured out by someone else. But overall, I don't think it would be disastrous if all those considerations are taken into account, but the bus can definitely not handle more children. I don't even think they would make it to school on time with the amount of kids got already. My child gets picked up at almost eight o'clock in the morning, and school doesn't start like 7:59. She gets picked up, school doesn't start till eight twenty-five. So it would be a very long bus route. My older daughter gets picked up for Hellcrest at 6:49, and school starts around 7:25. So it's a long bus route as it is, so that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up?
I'm Bernadine Crossick, I live at 61 Booth Hill Road. I live in the oldest house on the road, was built in 1928. It's a travesty that this, this whole building has to be done. It's a travesty to change that property and that area. Certainly, Mr. Mahaly has the right to build on that land. Frankly, I'm baffled by Mr. Rizio's repetitions because I know that buildings and houses are needed in Trumbull. I understand that. But I also understand that Mr. Mahaly owns four pieces of property he tried to sell and couldn't. He's renting them. So now, what is he proposing? He proposes forty-nine units because he can. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Mahaly, he's always been nice to us. But this is not the right way to do it. The environment is being affected. I know that's inland's wetlands, I get that, I get that after the first discussion. But I also know that when the bears were talked about, I can tell you that there are eighty-five species of birds in that wetland, and they don't measure property. They nest. There are empty nine reasons why that environment is a beautiful piece of property. Perhaps some families someday will enjoy it. I also will question this, the Kishabe property that Mr. Mahaly talked about. The art studio is about ten feet from our property line. It was a variance, it happened. The road proposed, the entrance goes through that property. Will they tear down that house? They've never said it. Will they do that? I don't know, but it's something for you to consider and to question. Certainly, in the winter of my life, I want to live there forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else like to speak?
Everybody's still awake? It's late for me, sorry. So I'll try to be quick. My name is Karen Ballard, I live at 32 Fern Circle. I've lived in the house over thirty-five years. I've been involved in many town organizations, the Nichols Garden Club in the past, involved in Threshwood Lake, and my husband was our current president of the NIA. So I want to state that I'm against this for a couple of points, and I'll kind of build on what other people have said. The current town regulation regarding the village resident district was written the way you wanted it to stay, and regardless of the narrative that the developer's attorney mentioned, I think your version has the most weight. So you put in the specifics, as many people said, about being on the state road, and I think that's very important, because if you let this slide and go further, you're crushing neighborhoods now, and that was never the intent when Trumbull passed it. You wanted it on busier sections of town. So I think, you know, it would be going down a very dangerous road, and I'm very against that. The other thing that was mentioned in the proposal was the fact that it's near the Merritt interchange, and it's only near half of a typical interchange. What happens when you want to go southbound or come back from a trip down from Westport or Stamford? You're gonna be going through the roads that Barry Unger had mentioned, which are the heart of Nichols roads, all around the neighborhood itself. So I think that's far-fetched to say it's near the Merritt Parkway interchange, and everyone's going that way and getting on the highways and going to work. Not true. Also, the property is very close to the Nichols Improvement Association property, the heart of Nichols, and I think that really affects a very special part of town. It's a historic district, and I think the essence will definitely be affected. Last point, this is a new point, Threshwood Lake. I've lived there for a long time, as I mentioned. Barry mentioned the way the wind blows. Well, that also affects the way the noise carries. And I am a nature lover, as other folks mentioned, the birds, the bears. But when those trees come down, they're not gonna be the dense trees, it can't be, it's all houses. That noise when the wind blows the right way is going to be even more intense. And where I live, being on the water, that's an echo chamber. So I really feel it's gonna be a humming, constant background noise of that highway if something like this goes in. The other thing to mention is we have a dam that releases water into this property. And we are classified, and we've always been classified, as a BB, which means we have to be inspected every seven years. If this development goes in and we put at risk people being injured, property being either moderately damaged or severely damaged, our classification will change, which means we will then be on a rotation of either every five years or every seven years. And that expense will change either a fifty percent increase or a three hundred and fifty percent increase in the outlays of what currently is only a thirty-member organization. The max is like forty to fifty families have to shoulder this expense. And the inspections will run something like thirty-five hundred, maybe to eight thousand dollars, depending on the engineering firm we hire. So that is an ongoing forever cost that's gonna be bared on this neighborhood forevermore. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but I want to point that out because that's very important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Chairman, my client would like to speak, and then I'll finish up.
I'll try to keep this brief, good evening. You know, my name's Matt Mahaly, I live off of Unity Road. I'm also the applicant, as well as my father. Of course, you heard him speak regarding our long history within the Trumbull neighborhood. And I also want the commission to hear it directly from the applicant and realize, you know, I was also here on the January fifteenth meeting, and, you know, we did have a potential, a different layout, right, that we were considering. I'm just gonna show that. After that meeting, we took into account some comments from the commission with regard to wetland impacts, traffic, and other comments as well. And we came back with a fresh layout after coordinating with our engineer, and this is something that we were able to put together, and this is something that we would like to do. It is a great use of the property. I also want to make it clear, as Attorney Rizio mentioned, the only applicable section of the code that we are wishing to amend is the street location. Everything else, the density, the sidewalks, the landscaping plan with regard to the village residence district, we fully intend on implementing into a potential site plan on these parcels. As mentioned, it's modeled off the enclave, which was a great, successful community. And we've actually hired the engineers who worked directly on that project. So they know that layout inside and out, they understand the village residence district, they're implementing their knowledge into this potential layout that we could do on our piece of land. And, you know, the single-family homes that we're proposing is in line with that density. Three and a half units, a net buildable acre, we're showing forty-nine total homes. Additionally, as mentioned, we have performed a traffic study, we submitted that tonight, obviously. There are recommendations in there as well that might address, you know, the intersection at Booth Hill and Unity. And as far as the line of sight profiles, they did ask us to shift the access road, which we have done on this new and revised layout that is fresh tonight. And, you know, ultimately, it showed that this size development has no impact with regard to traffic. We also are... We did submit a traffic report tonight, and I advise the public to please request that, and if they would like to read it over in full, that would be my suggestion. The access road we're proposing meets the intent of the village residence district as well, twenty-four feet. We've also, were able to maintain the two access roads, which would be great for emergency responders and other personnel. We eliminated the direct impact to the wetland down here, so we shifted the road out of that wetland, so we have no direct impacts whatsoever. And then additionally, it does provide buffering from the neighboring uses of the property. We are, we do have some natural vegetation in forest along the outer rims of the boundary of the parcels, which on leaf-on conditions would mitigate any visual impact. We also are proposing, you know, a decent-sized setback from the parkway. And I actually live right here, about an arm's length from the parkway. And I have a decibel meter, and I, you know, go outside every once in a while, and I point it. It is loud, I go inside, you wouldn't even know. And the setbacks here with that natural divider with the wetland, the setbacks substantially, noise would be very minimal. Additionally, we fully intend to incorporate sidewalks to make this a walkable community, and we will also incorporate a landscaping plan. And as the applicant, you know, being here for quite some time in Trumbull, I would be happy to offer local landscaper to utilize and, you know, the job for this project if this amendment were to pass. And although we're not proposing any amenities with this layout as-is, I would also like to point out that residents would be able to enjoy Twin Brooks Park or Beaches Pool, which is within a short two- to five-minute drive. And the overall intent of our amendment is to solve a problem and help mitigate the shortfall in housing that the town of Trumbull has. I was on Zillow the other night, and from what I saw, there was approximately twenty-three homes that were available, which in my opinion is very, very minimal. The property also, in some areas, has succumbed to some overgrown vegetation. This proposed development would allow that property to be maintained and add an overall vibrant effect to the community. And would also blend in with the existing neighborhood in terms of Threshwood Lake and Pinewood neighborhoods, aren't that too far as well? As far as the impact on school goes, I will keep it brief. I understand the commission's concerns. I would also like to point out, I think that the town has demonstrated that they are willing to invest with the, as far as the lifelong infrastructure of the school system, with the new proposed construction of Hellcrest Middle School, and the increase in budget that passed recently. And as mentioned, we are happy to engage a consultant that would provide a study demonstrating the potential impacts of this development, which we would provide by next meeting, if granted. Overall, it'll increase tax revenue, and it'll also help the long-term economic ability, adding these future homes, obviously, Trumbull Center is within a short five-minute drive. There is, you know, restaurants and such that are located there, and the Long Hill community is not that far as well, within a ten-minute drive. So as far as the long-term economic impact, this project would, you know, help and benefit that. And additionally, I just want the commission to understand... help and benefit that. Um, and additionally, I just, I just want the commission to understand that, you know, we want to work with you guys. We'd want to propose something that is a worthwhile project to pursue. We feel this is the best use for this property. We don't want to pursue, you know, an eight-thirty-G application. We don't think that fits the nature of the neighborhood. Um, and ultimately, we would respectfully request the commission consider approving this text amendment change, uh, to allow a community like this to be developed in, in this, uh, this area.
Thank you.
So, okay. I'm good. Yeah, thank you very much.
That was the wrap-up.
Chairman, I want to respond to a couple things, and then I'll get, I'll be done. First of all, um, some of the comments by the, by Mr. Unger, under two-point-seven-point-one, two-point-seven-point-HV, you know, under your regulations, traffic, the town, we have to provide a traffic report if we go forward. Traffic report can be hired by the town, paid by the applicant, so you don't have to worry about the veracity of the traffic report. You can require sidewalks under your regulation. Public safety, we have to be approved by both the police commissioner and the fire marshal before we even come to you. So all of the issues that have been talked about with regard to traffic, site, um, safety, all has to go through all of the proper channels before we get to you. Um, and Pandora's box is open. The property's gonna be developed, okay? Uh, let's just make that clear. We're trying to do it in a, in a manner that is most, we think, consistent with what, the way, with, with the way the property's situated and where it's situated. Um, my clients would consider a, I know some of the, everybody's talked about the impact on the schools. We don't believe, we believe we can provide a study that there wouldn't be a negative impact, but we would consider a deed restriction to age restricted, if that would take that matter off the table, which seems to be of utmost concern. But this is sixteen acres, ten of which, fourteen of which are upland. It's not gonna be developed in a traditional way. I'm just gonna make that clear. I may not be the person back when it comes in again, probably won't be. But the property's gonna be developed. We would like to do it in accordance with a VRD that has been very successful. You have a built-in to your regulation, our amendment concerns only making this property available for this type of development. But that's just the start. So every one of these issues that were brought up tonight have to be satisfied with this regulation that starts on page one-oh-two, ends on page one-nol-eight, and covers every possible, um, detrimental effect that could happen that this commission, even in granting this, could turn down an application that they feel is too dense, not appropriate, not, uh, not architecturally appropriate, um, damaging to the environment. The list goes on. You have built in your regulation the ability to say, propose something, but we don't like it. And to do that, we need to get a zone change and a special permit. It'll all have to come before you, and it'll all have to come before you after. We've been to wetlands, police, fire, satisfy the traffic engineer that is hired by the town and paid by us. So that's where, so we're gonna come under this type of scrutiny. The reason that we put together this proposal to show what it looks like is because I knew the question was gonna be, how many units and what could it possibly look like? This is the maximum that it could look like. This commission's pretty good about working with the maximum and making, and approving what's appropriate. And that's what we're looking, the opportunity to get back before you and come through with an application that's appropriate. As I said, we'd consider a deed restriction as, as a, as a, as a, well, you have, you have control. Chairman, I know you always make it abundantly clear on text amendments. You control the language. If this commission so, so deemed to put a deed restriction in that required that, you know, at least one paid, one person over the age of fifty-five has to live in these homes, so it's deed restricted like the other age-restricted communities in town, uh, we, we would consider that. I just thought I'd make that clear, that that is not something we're drawing the line in the sand on. But we will be, we, we would like to be back before you for a DRD. We'll be back one way or another. Um, I'm just trying, we're trying to give you something that you've already seen, you've done, and it's worked in another part of town. I think this is a, a similar part of town with a similar road system. Um, however, I think it's a much better property in the way it's buffered from the surrounding neighborhood and very close to getting onto White Plains Road, Unity Road, and not traversing through the neighborhoods. For all those reasons, I respectfully request that you grant this application and give us the opportunity to come back before you with an application that this commission would deem appropriate for a VRD, along with a, a possible deed restriction that would take off any kind of, um, concerns about effects on the school system.
You, you mentioned almost everything about the possibility of it being less dense once this modification is addressed by this commission, if they so choose to modify the maximum density.
That's, Chairman, as you've always made abundantly clear, you control the language. We, we believe this is appropriate. We think the DRD was successful at the enclave.
And the other two things, the other two things you already covered are, uh, the traffic, a traffic study that would be paid for by the independent applicant, fifty-five and over. You know, I appreciated the comment about the traffic study. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I've said that multiple times over twenty years. I never saw one. The only difference is, traffic studies that get presented are never false. That's the difference. They're, they don't fail. They've all proven out. So it is, it is a good comedy line, that they, they all have a traffic study that proves it, but they are factual, because those guys are all still in business. So, uh, if everybody has spoken, you need to say something?
Mr. Chairman, can I make, make one observation? Um, the applicant mentioned sidewalks. Does that include sidewalks, uh, along Booth Hill Road?
The commission has the authority specifically in the regulations to require sidewalks.
Right. That would be the application, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then just one other, here's a, here's something else that's maybe a little bit out of the box. But would the applicant work with the Public Works Department on the feasibility of connecting a sidewalk to Apple Orchard? That way, people want to take their walks and get over to, uh, Threshwood Lake? They can do that without taking their lives in their hands.
What will have to happen, what will have to happen is, we have to work with every single, we have to work with every single department in the town. We'd have to consider the recommendations of your town planner, your town engineer, your fire marshal, your police chief, and all those concerns, including extending of sidewalks, things like that, are something that would be considered in a master plan. And you have the authority to require those type of things in your regulation that you, that you constructed for the enclave.
Great. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Attorney Rizio, in the event that the commission decides to close the public hearing tonight and not vote because of the lateness of the hour, I know our next meeting is perhaps thirty-five days close. So would you consent to a...
Chairman, I give an, I give an extension of all, right now, on for the record, we'll give an extension of the statutory times to open, close, or make a decision on this hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think we've heard from everybody. We've heard from all the commissioners, right? At this time, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Deacon, Ms. Delvecchio, all in favor, I, one, two, three, four, five. And Attorney Cordon is correct due to the late hour. There's no way we're gonna rush a discussion on this, so we will hold the, the liberation and voting on this application to the, uh, April meeting. Okay? Because we're not done. Give me your agenda, because I wrote on it and turned it around again. I keep taking notes.
Mr. Chairman, you want the minutes motion?
What?
You want the minutes motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Rob.
Go ahead.
Uh, read the minutes for the February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular reading and found them to be their usual order, and make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, I, one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, and our condolences go out to Commissioner Hall on the loss of her father, who can't join us this evening. Our best wishes. Thank you. Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Silver, all in favor, I, one, two, three, four, five.
All right, Dennis, we're done.